We're talking with.
It has been determined that there is a quorum. I ask that you take your seats and be quiet. Thank you. I am opening the 2023 annual town meeting of the town of Brookline, Massachusetts, and I welcome you all. First, as a matter of order, well, once to dispel all anxiety, yes, we will get to tablet training that is coming up. But there are some additional formalities we will take care of first. I am Kate Poverman. I am the town moderator. Seated behind me, standing behind me is Mr. Sandy Gadsby, who is the assistant town moderator. I'm going to take the applause for myself as well as for Mr. Gadsby. Thank you. Mr. Ben Kaufman, the town clerk is to my left. I like this being in person stuff. Okay, to my left are our wonderful IT people, Dave Mercardo and Tanisha, whose last name? Land. Save your applause from for the end. We have our esteemed select board, meeting members, our town administrator, our town council, and deputy administrator, and I'm sorry, I'm not giving your names, but I'm rushing through things now, and our advisory committee members to the sides of me respectively. Okay, now, the first thing we have to do is have the clerk acknowledge, oh, okay, is the sound working properly now? Can anyone can be heard in back? Yes. Louder. Okay, is that better? Okay, Mr. Town Clerk, Mr. Kaufman, could you please acknowledge whether or not there has been proper publication in service of the warrant?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The warrant has been properly published and noticed, and I'm hereby returning the service to you.
Nicely done. All right, I now welcome Vina Priestley up to the podium to sing the Star Spangled Banner.
Oh, say, oh, like, come on up. Yeah, stay up there. I'm missing. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the red parts we watched were so gallantly streaming. It's bursting. Through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star spangled banner yet wave o'er the land?
Thank you, Vina. That was beautifully done and comes across even more beautifully in person than online, and I'm going to correct one error I made, which was not to identify our town council, Joe Callanan, who is now hiding by name, and to his right, Chaz Carey, town administrator, and Melissa Goth, deputy administrator, because they are so critical to the working of everything in town and especially town meeting, the select board members. They can identify themselves as they will be speaking tonight. Anyway, I'm now turning over proceedings to Ben Kaufman to introduce town meeting members, induct them, and do some other matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I will now like to invite all newly elected, newly reelected, or newly caucus town meeting members to please rise so you may receive the oath of office. Please raise your right hands and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent on me as a town meeting member according to the best of my ability and understanding agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution, the laws of the Commonwealth, and under rules, regulations, and bylaws made under authority thereon. Congratulations to you all.
Okay, and now we will have a recording of Ms. Felina Silver Robertson doing the Indigenous Peoples' Declaration.
As you dance, you dance, you dance, you dance.
It promised there would be bumps.
All right, to get past this first bump, we are going to defer, as we are going to be deferring some articles, the reading of the land acknowledgement until the beginning of tomorrow night's proceedings. I am going to cede the podium back to Mr. Kaufman unless for some reason he is otherwise unable to do so. In the meantime, as I said, it is wonderful to see you all here in person. I hope you have had a wonderful three years. It is wonderful to see so many new faces. And I know here again is Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. As we begin this night of town meeting and this first time meeting in person along time, we should pause for a moment to remember former town meeting colleagues who passed away this past year. Marshall Smith, Florence Wilder, Agnes Rogers, Edith Pearlman, Annette Gregson, Robert Volk, and Robert Kramer. Please join me in a moment of silence as we remember their service to the town. Thank you all. This is a new town meeting for many of us in many different ways, both a return to in person with so many new faces, as well as a new voting system that we all have that I know folks are absolutely thrilled about getting to play with. So everybody, when they came in, was given a tablet that you should have in your hand. If you hold it up right now, you'll be able to compare what it looks like with the tablet that we're going to have up on the screen here. A couple of the important buttons to turn your tablet on and off. There's a button on the right-hand side. That is how you will turn it on and off. If your tablet is off, all you want to do is push that button and then swipe up on the screen, and it will bring you back to the homepage. The homepage is what you see here. There are many icons. The two most important for you while you are here. In the top left-hand corner, there is the Zoom icon. If you are ever outside of the Zoom platform, and you need to get back into the Zoom platform, that is the icon that you push. In order for you to vote on an article, when the poll starts, you must be in Zoom in order to see the voting poll drop in front of you. So when the moderator is getting to a point of a vote, she will let you know, and you should get back to that Zoom screen as quickly as you can to make sure that you see that vote. The poll will only appear when you are on the main Zoom screen. It will not appear if you are in the transcript. It will not appear if you are on the participants list, and it will not appear if you are anywhere else in the tablet. So please make sure that you are on that Zoom screen when a poll starts. For those of you who did not request hard copies of the combined reports ahead of time, you can access the combined reports on your tablet. The top right corner is a link to the town meeting files page of the website, which is very helpfully organized by warrant article, so you can go there and you can look at all of the combined reports as well as the supplemental materials for every article that we're going to be discussing at this town meeting. When you came in, you were handed a tablet that was already on the Zoom registration page. Every night you will be getting a different tablet, so you will need to sign in again for that night's town meeting. At the top, you should double-check to make sure that the date is correct. We have each night as a different length. You'll want to make sure that you are in the correct night. If everybody is in the Zoom screen right now, can you see a video of me? If you see a video of me, you're in the correct one. If you do not believe you are in the correct night, in the back of the room, we have staff from the IT department, from my town clerk's office, from another other town departments. I'm going to ask you guys to wave your hands. All the people in the back are IT staff. Please go and find them. They can help you out. They can provide additional guidance. So if you think you're in the wrong meeting, go to them. If you have any issues, go to them. When you type your name in, you will type your first name in, followed by your precinct. So it will be first name. So for me, it will be Ben and then AL, or you'll write in John and then P1. Then you'll write your last name and your precinct, and you will scroll down so that you can join the meeting in progress. Once that happens, it's going to take a few minutes for you to get into the meeting because we have our team quickly working to get everybody in, so please be patient. We encourage you to get here a little bit early so you can make sure you're in the meeting before we start at seven o'clock each night. Once you're actually in Zoom, you will see a screen which will either have a speaker on it or will have a little person, just the outline of a person. That is the Zoom home screen. That's where you want to be before any voting begins. If you are not on that screen, you will not see the poll, and you'll need to get back. If for any reason you are on a different page or a different part of your tablet, you're going to want to press down at the bottom as a little square. That is the home button. If you press that, it will get you back to the home screen where you can press the Zoom app and get back into it. So at this point in the meeting, everybody should be in. You should be looking at either your Zoom home screen or recording of me or video of me. So if you are not seeing one of those two things, I suggest that you go to the back touch base with our IT team to go in. What we're going to do in a minute is we're actually going to do a practice vote. Do not worry, we have multiple practice votes queued up, so that if you miss one, we will have more. If you have a problem with one, we will have additional ones. The voting is going to happen the same way that it happens when we are remote on Zoom. A poll will drop down. You must select yes, no, or abstain, and then hit submit to submit your vote. You will only have one opportunity. I'm sorry. Sure, I'm going to then pause for just a minute to let people sort out some of the issues that they're having with their tablets in the back. Again, if you're having any kind of issue with your tablet, please head to the back so that you can talk to one of the folks from our town staff. If you need any kind of assistance, you can also come up to the front here if you are having a problem with our IT staff right here. I'm going to give people just a minute to get everything sorted out.
I see it. I see.
All right, everybody, I'm going to just ask you to pause for one second because I think we've identified what the what the problem is. People at the very top of your Zoom screen, it should have a date. Some of them say Tuesday, the 23rd. Some of them say Wednesday, the 24th. As long as you see a video of this room or a video of me, you are in the correct meeting. We are going to do test votes to make sure that everybody is clear on that and that everybody feels confident in that. So if the issue is that the data at the top looks wrong, but you see the video of this meeting, you are in the correct place. Do not worry. We're going to do some test votes so that you can make sure that everything is working all right. Does that sound okay for people? Excellent. Thank you very much for your patience. We work through a new system. It's always a lot of fun. So we are going to do a test vote very quickly, just so that we got a practice run for it. When the vote actually drops, you will see a yes, a no, an abstain. You will select your three options, and then you will hit submit. You will only have one opportunity to vote in the voting period, so please make sure you select the right vote because you will not have an opportunity to go back. Once you vote and hit submit, your vote is recorded. When the poll ends, it will come up with the results, and on the result screen, it will say at the bottom whether or not your what your vote was recorded as. You can actually confirm that it was properly recorded. When we actually are in the voting period, there will be a timer behind the moderator to do the countdown, so you will know how much time is left in the voting period. Again, you have to be on that home screen of Zoom, the screen which right now has this meeting in it in order for you to see that poll. So we are about to do a vote. Everybody get into your Zoom app, and I'm going to have our IT team drop the poll. Excellent. The voting period has started, so everybody should have seen a poll drop down over their screen. You can vote yes, you can vote no, you can vote abstain. This is just a test vote. And once you select yes or no or abstain, you're going to want to make sure that you hit submit. If you do not hit submit, your vote will not be recorded. So select yes or no or abstain and then hit submit. So the voting period is over, and when it is over, you will see a poll pop up over your screen. It will tell you both the results of the vote as well as how you voted. So it will say yes, no, abstain, as well as what your answer was. So you can look there and confirm that your answer was properly recorded. 147 yes, 39 no, and 37 abstentions is the final vote. And that is how we proceed in town meeting. The moderator will announce the vote totals right afterwards from the IT. And that is how we'll proceed in town meeting. The moderator will announce the vote totals right afterwards from the IT team. Did anybody have problems with that last practice vote? If you did, you should go up to the back to the IT team and ask for some assistance. They should be able to help you guys out. Would people like to do another recorded vote, another practice vote to make sure everything's good? All right, we'll do. In that case, I'm going to ask for everybody to get back to the Zoom screen, and we're going to do another vote. All right, we are going to do a second practice vote right now. So we're already in the voting process, so I can't allow a speaker, but we can after. So the voting has started. You should have a poll drop down. Again, there is the yes, there is the no. If you scroll down a little bit, you will see the abstain option, and then you'll want to select your vote and hit submit. I would check with the IT team in the back just to make sure. So we're nearing the end of the voting period. You want to make sure you select your vote and hit submit before the voting period ends. When it ends, you will see a screen drop down that will have the results of the vote, as well as what you voted. So you can look and you can make sure that your vote was properly recorded. Sorry. I've never heard somebody tell me to speak louder. That is very fun. You want to, when the vote closes, the poll closes, you will see the votes drop down, and it will have the yes, no, abstain, as well as what your vote was, so you can compare and make sure that your vote was properly recorded. Now, if a technical issue resulted in your vote not being properly recorded, a technical issue is that your tablet wasn't working, that the Wi-Fi stopped working, the poll never appeared, you can correct your vote by coming to me. I have forms at my table where you can request that your vote be properly recorded, or you can send me an email. Your vote can only be corrected if it was because of a technical issue. Saying that you were off using the restroom, you were off getting some cookies and some coffee is not an acceptable reason to correct your vote. The way that the Wi-Fi is set up in the auditorium, your tablets will not work outside of this room. If you go out to get coffees or cookie, you will not be able to have your Zoom on. You will not see the poll. You will not be able to vote. So whenever a vote is occurring, you need to be in this room and need to be on the Zoom app. So again, if you have a technical issue, you can bring it to me. You can send me an email, or you can come up to my table, and we can get that corrected. But that is only for a technical issue. How are people feeling about voting? Do we want to do one more practice vote? Do we want to do a vote on if we want to do a practice vote? Even closer to the microphone? Okay, I'll put it. All right, well done. I will be right in here. Should I do the whole thing again from the beginning? Hi, my name is Ben Kaufman. No, we will not do all of that. But if anybody has issues with their tablets, for the first hour of town meeting, we will have our IT teams in the back. Please go to them. Afterwards, at any other point, you can go out into the hallway. We have a help desk, so that you can get assistance out there as well. So any questions about the tablets before we move on to the substance of our first night of town meeting? Excellent. Well, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the phenomenal staff from the town, from the IT department, the town clerk's office, from many different departments who make this happen, as well as our partners at BIG who do all of the audio and video for us. They are the ones who truly make these nights happen, and they deserve our greatest appreciation. So. Thank you very much to them, and I'll turn it back over to the moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. So to give you a general idea of what we are covering tonight and tomorrow, if you don't already have one, we are going to be first going through votes, excuse me, Articles 1 through 6. However, we will not be voting on Article 2 relating to collective bargaining, because there will be a motion to defer consideration of that. And we will not be opening the special town meeting at 7:30, not just because it is 7:35, but also because, once we get there, there will be a motion to adjourn it until, I believe it's also May 31st. After that, we will start discussion of the budget. The budget discussion, this is not usual, but the budget will be bifurcated. Part of it will be done tonight, including the discussion of the Pierce School appropriation. But the discussion of departmental and non-departmental budgets will be deferred until Thursday, June 2023. Tomorrow, we'll finish the part of the budget, except for that that's been deferred, and we'll do probably Articles 8 through 11. Now here is the etiquette of town meeting. You wait to be called on by the moderator. You cannot speak unless I talk to you and say you are supposed to speak. When you talk, you give your name and precinct. You will likely be interrupted if you do not do so, and I will say, please identify yourself, or who are you, or something along those lines. It's very important that people know who is talking. Please don't be offended if you think I know who you are, and I still ask you to identify yourself. Everyone else needs to know who you are as well. If you have a conflict of interest, a financial conflict of interest, you need to say that and say why you have one. For example, let's say there was a zoning article which required that a car dealership be established in every district in town, in every precinct, and you owned a car dealership, and your name began with her. You would have to disclose that to town meeting when you came up to speak in favor of the article. Everyone who sits here is Mr., Ms., or Mix. We have about maybe 75% of you are doctors or hold some other honorary area, except for State Representative Vitolo and me. You are going to be called by Mr., Ms., or Mix, or Mrs., if you prefer, and if so, let me know. I am called madam, which is the only benefit I get from this position and the ability to hit the gavel. So everyone has to be polite. If you are not polite, you will be cut off. Your microphone will be cut off. Disruptive, impolite behavior will lead to your being asked to leave the auditorium. It will not be accepted. We are all here. We are all here as colleagues. It is our hope that seeing each other face-to-face, rather than online on Zoom, will establish us to be able to create better, closer relationships and understand how we as a whole represent the town and represent what is best in the town. Okay, we are going to begin with motions to defer. I am just going to list the motions to defer. We are going to take voice votes, and they will pass by a majority vote. First, I received a motion to defer consideration of Article 2, the collective bargaining agreements from today to be heard Wednesday, May 31st, 2023. Actually, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. It is unanimous, aye vote. Second, we have a motion relating to Article 7 made by Mr. Green, seconded by Mr. Friedman, to move discussion of the departmental and non-departmental expenses portion of the budget and the omnibus vote on the budget to June 1st, 2023. We will take a voice vote, and the majority wins. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion passes. Thank you. Next, I have a motion to move Article 13 relating to establishing an Office of Housing Stability, made by Chi Chi Wu and seconded by Scott Ananian, to set the debate for that article on June 6th, 2023. If for some reason we have finished all business of town meeting before then, we will hear that article earlier than June 6th, 2023. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? The motion passes. Article 19, there has been a motion which relates to the establishment of a Black and Brown Commission. And a motion has been moved to consider it on a date certain of Wednesday, May 31st, 2023. And if you are in favor of this, please say aye. If you are opposed, say nay. Okay, it is passed. We are now turning to Article 1, which deals with the measures of bark and wood. And I call Mr. Paul Warren to, I was going to say to the stand, but to address this issue and explain to you what this controversial article deals with. Thank you.
How's that? Can you hear me in the back? First, my time hasn't started. It's so nice to see you all in person. Paul Warren, speaking for unanimous select board, recommending favorable action on Article 1. I stand before you today, not afraid to tackle a topic that as strong as oak and as lively as a beaver chewing on a log. Well, that's good. The measures of wood and bark and their similarities to the will of the voters. Now you may wonder, what on earth do these two things have in common? Well, let me branch out and explain before you start barking at the wrong tree. First, let's consider wood. Wood is the backbone of civilization, sprucing up our lives with homes and furniture and structures that make us pine for more. Similarly, the will of the voters is the foundation upon which our democratic society is built. It shapes the laws, policies, and leaders that govern us. Just as wood provides strength and stability, the will of the voters provides the foundational lumber that supports our political system. But what about bark, you may ask? Ah, bark is the protective armor that shields the trunk from external elements. In the same vein, the will of the voters acts as a shield guarding against the threats to our democracy. When it comes to measuring the will of the voters, we can't simply brush it aside like loose bark or bypass it like a gnarly knot. Just as a master carpenter measures each piece of wood with precision, we must measure the will of the voters to know their desires and aspirations. Sometimes the will of the voters may seem like a tough nut to crack. But remember, just as the gnarled wood can be whittled into a masterpiece, the will of the voters can lead to beautiful transformations in our society. It is through understanding and respect that we can unlock the potential of the wood and the will of the voters alike. In the realm of politics, it's crucial to listen carefully to the voter's voice. After all, a tree falling in the forest may not make a sound, but when voters cast their ballots, it reverberates through the halls of power. Their collective voice can echo like the crack of a splintering redwood, shaking the foundations of our political landscape. So my fellow enthusiasts of democracy, let us remember the measures of wooden bark and teach us the valuable lessons about the will of the voters. Just as wood provides strength and stability, the will of the voters fortifies our democratic institutions. And just as bark shields the trunk, the will of the voters acts as a guardian protecting our cherished values. Now my flowering finish. Thank you, and may the will of the voters always be the towering pine, standing tall and proud as a beacon guiding our democratic journey through the wilderness of politics. Thank you.
I think you have rivaled. I've lost, oh, there we are. Almost, almost as many puns as Stanley Spiegel used to work in, so that's quite an achievement, Mr. Warren. We will now vote on Article 1, which was moved by Mr. Warren and seconded by Dennis Doughty. We will take a. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were speaking. I apologize. You're right. I now call Dennis Doughty to talk. Now, we're moving things quickly, Mr.
You know, there's, you know, separation of powers and all, but we have a chance to weigh in on every warrant article. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Dennis Doughty, Precinct 3, speaking for unanimous advisory committee in support of Article 1. Over the years, the town meeting reports on the measures of wood and bark have become a tradition, replete with, as you heard already, grown-inducing puns related to wood. And I have to say that I wondered with all that emphasis, why no one ever leaned in on the barking side of the equation, so. Doggone it, I'm going to do that. One of my pet peeves is how little time we get to speak here. No sooner do we get started, we're immediately hounded to finish up. It can be distracting. I do have a pointer for you. When it happens, don't deign to listen to her. Just pause for a second. Shepherd your thoughts, maybe doodle a few notes to yourself, and then finish up. By a vote of 19 to 0 with no abstentions, the advisory committee urges favorable action on warrant article 1.
Again, my sincerest apologies to Mr. Doughty, and we will now vote on this controversial motion. All those in favor of passing Article 1 and appointing measures of wooden bark or allowing them to be appointed by the select board, say aye. All those opposed? It passes. The ayes have it. Thank you. We would next go to Article number 2, however, that has been deferred to May 31st. So we will now address Article number 3 relating to compensating balance agreements, which is moved by Mr. Warren and seconded by Mr. Doughty. Mr. Warren, I believe you will be speaking first.
There's a theme here. The newbie gets all the grunt work. Paul Warren, speaking for unanimous select board. This article filed annually, is filed annually. Compensating balances are agreements between a depositor and a bank in which the depositor agrees to maintain a specific level of non-interest-bearing deposits in return for which the bank agrees to perform certain services for the depositor. In order to incorporate each compensating balance agreement into the local budget process, the Commonwealth passed a law in 1986 mandating that all such arrangements be authorized by town meeting on an annual basis. Funds have been included in the treasurer's FY 2024 budget to pay for these banking services directly. This authorization, however, will give the treasurer the flexibility to enter into such agreements if it should be in the best interest of the town. By unanimous vote, the select board recommends favorable action on Article 3.
Mr. Doughty.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Dennis Doughty, Precinct 3, speaking for the advisory committee in support of Article 3. As noted, this article is filed annually in accordance with mass general laws, and it allows the town to maintain specified deposits in exchange for the reduction or elimination of cash payments for bank services. This gives the treasurer the authority, but does not require him or her to enter into these agreements when prudent. Town meeting has authorized these arrangements since the mid-1980s. By a vote of 19 to 0 with one abstention, the advisory committee recommends favorable action on warrant article 3.
Thank you, and I believe Ms. Khan has something to say on this issue. I've been misinformed. Okay, I've received a motion to adjourn annual town meeting so that we can. Oh, dear God. Okay, why don't we take a vote on Article 3 to authorize the treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements? Ms. Khan's absence totally threw me off. It will be a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? All those opposed? And once again, I have received a motion to adjourn. By Mr. Green, seconded by Ms. Jonas. To adjourn the town meeting. To allow us to go to the second town, excuse me, special town meeting twenty minutes late. We will have a voice vote on whether or not to temporarily adjourn annual town meeting. We will have a voice vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion passes. All right. I am now opening the. Special Town Meeting. Of two thousand and twenty three. And I have received a motion to adjourn by Neil Gordon, seconded by Anthony Ischak. To adjourn it until May thirty first, as I recall. Is that correct, Mr. Gordon? All right, since we have received that motion, I will now have people vote on it. All those in favor? All those opposed? We have a single standout, but other than that, the motion passes. Oh, and then abstention. Okay. Hey, may I have a motion to, oh, just adjourned. All right, well, I am going to re-adjourn the annual town meeting. What have I forgotten? A reconvene. All right, there's no motion on Article Four. Or on Article Five, so we are going past those. And we are going to Article Six, which is moved by Paul Warren and seconded by Dennis Doughty. It can be found on the combined reports, page six, two, which is the select board motion. And I call Mr. Warren again to speak to you.
Paul Warren, speaking on behalf of a unanimous select board. Article Six provides for an increase in property tax exemption amounts. For certain classes of individuals, including surviving spouses, aging adults, the blind, and disabled veterans. The proposed increases, which require annual reauthorization, have been approved annually since nineteen eighty nine. The estimated cost for FY twenty four is approximately forty one thousand dollars and is funded from the tax abatement overlay reserve account. The law allows the town to increase the exemption by up to a hundred percent. A unanimous select board recommends favorable action on Article Six.
Mr. Doughty.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Dennis Doughty, Precinct Three, speaking for a unanimous advisory committee in support of Article Six. And everything that I was going to say was said by. Mr. Warren, except that by unanimous vote of twenty two in favor. And none opposed, the advisory committee recommends favorable action on warrant Article Six.
Now, my notes may be mistaken, but Mr. Gashock, did you wish to speak on this matter? Okay, thank you very much. All right, we are now going to vote on whether or not to increase property tax exemptions for certain classes of people. As just described, if somebody is trying to make a point of order or. Oh, move for a recorded vote. Okay, if thirty five people stand in favor of a recorded vote, we will take a recorded vote. All right, we will take a recorded vote. All right, make sure your tablet is awake by pressing the sign button. Make sure that you have. Returned yourself to the Zoom screen. So that you are properly able to vote. And that the correct tablet for voting will drop down. We will now start the vote on whether or not to increase the property tax exemption. You will have forty five seconds. Okay, the motion passes. There were two hundred and twenty six yes votes, two no votes, and three abstentions. And we will now turn to the budget discussion. Which is Article Seven, as indicated earlier, the discussion of the departmental budgets. And the omnibus vote will be deferred until June first. We will first hear the overall presentations of the budget. Since the advisory committee, as the finance committee of the town, is the entity that presents the budget, we will first hear from Mr. Doughty. Who is the chair of the advisory committee.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Dennis Doughty, Precinct Three, and Advisory Committee Chair, speaking for. A nearly unanimous advisory committee recommending favorable action on the main budget motion of three hundred and sixty five million, five hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred dollars. Which includes an allocation of a hundred and thirty million, seven hundred and two thousand, three hundred and seventy six dollars to the public schools of Brookline. Now, because there were so many new town meeting members, before we discuss any of the details of the budget, I will give a little overview of how the budgeting process works. And why this budget comes from the advisory committee at all. The general bylaws ask the advisory committee, which is a committee appointed by the moderator, to quote, "consider any and all municipal questions." And all articles in the warrant for a town meeting for the purpose of making reports and recommendations. And we interpret this as follows. We hold public hearings on all warrant articles. We produce reports on all warrant articles, and we make recommendations on most of them. The bylaw also says that the advisory committee, quote, "shall submit a budget at the annual town meeting." And it may examine the books and records of any board, committee, or officer of the town. In practice, this means that we review, again, in public hearings. The budget requests for each department and produce reports and recommendations for each. Culminating in the comprehensive budget motion we will be discussing at this town meeting. Over the last several years, the advisory committee has taken steps to improve transparency and communication and to be explicit about separating our data gathering and analysis from our recommendations. And you should be able to see that throughout the combined reports in which we try to lay out the meaning of a yes or no vote and our assessment of the financial and legal implications of each article. And it's my goal. That whether or not you ultimately agree with our recommendations, you can trust that our information gathering and analysis gives you the information that you need to make your own decisions. I want to thank each and every member of the advisory committee for their dedication to this task, for it is not an easy one. The work on this budget alone comprised dozens of public hearings and meetings, along with countless more hours of work preparing the questions for department heads. Performing research and writing the reports needed to inform the debates that will occur at this town meeting. This year, along the way, the advisory committee received a lot of attention. Social media was filled with posts of the form, "Did you see the advisory committee has eliminated the planning department?" Or the advisory committee eviscerated the school budget. Or the advisor committee's job is to listen to the voters. And I hope that by the end of this presentation. I will assuage some of these concerns. And I'd like to kick things off with a story about last year's budgeting process. Because during the fiscal year twenty three budgeting process, the capital subcommittee declined to recommend the building department's budget. Because, in its opinion, insufficient funds were included for building maintenance, particularly the increased maintenance cost for the newer high-tech school buildings. And our committee indicated that not only should more funds be allocated for building maintenance in fiscal year twenty three, but that future budgets should reflect this need. And those of you who are here during that process will note that the final fiscal year twenty three budget included one-time ARPA funds for this purpose. As well as an increased maintenance allocation within the school budget. And those of you who have looked at this year's budget for the building department will note a sharp increase. Additionally, the town school partnership now does take maintenance costs into consideration when making its recommendations, and I consider that process to be a success. An example of fiscal oversight and action, taking steps to address both short and long-term concerns, and I would hold it up as a success. Whether or not social media had erupted along the way with complaints that the advisory committee had eliminated the building department. How is this relevant to this year's budget process? Well, as we'll see in the more detailed discussion, the advisory committee this year had concerns with the budgets and or planning practices of several town departments. Specifically, the planning department, the public safety departments with respect to personnel training, the council and aging veteran services, and the schools. And preliminary votes were taken, just as they were last year, with respect to the priorities identified then. And a lengthy reconciliation process began, resulting in this budget. This process was complicated by the fact that in most cases, we had two budgets to consider, the so-called base budget or non-override budget. Along with a set of recommendations should the override pass. These recommendations were ultimately, were alternately referred to as cuts or enhancements, depending upon which point was trying to be made, but the effect was the same. If the override failed, certain items would not be funded. When I first joined town meeting over a decade ago, my colleague, Harry Boers, was the advisory committee chair, and I remember him standing at this lectern. Starting his budget remarks by saying that a budget is an expression of the community's values, and that's what we're debating here. Not whether any particular line item is worthwhile, because there's a constituency for every item in the budget, and in almost every case, that constituency thinks that more money for that particular purpose would go to good use. The question we are always presented with is how to effectively balance those desires within our means. And although we can raise the levy through regular overrides, we cannot raise enough money to pay for every single item, and we have to prioritize. If I personally could wave the proverbial magic wand, I would be in favor of harnessing the wisdom of crowds and adding forms of participatory budgeting to our process. Cambridge allows voters to vote on the allocation of a portion of its budget. But absent that, the town administration, subject to oversight and review from the advisory committee, tries to balance concerns in a fiscally responsible way. And the values expressed through the budget review process last year included reduce the underinvestment in maintenance, and this year they include. Improve the conditions for some of our most vulnerable population. Invest for the future by improving training for public safety officers and have a transparent process with respect to planning. And to conclude these introductory remarks, I want to say a few words about the override process. And to be clear, this is my personal observation. It should not be construed as the official position of the advisory committee, but I hope it resonates with many of you. I've lived through several overrides, and there was something notable to me about this one, because in years past. Overrides were often positioned in, I would say, sort of semi-apocalyptic terms. You know, if this override fails, we'll be forced to cut, fill in your favorite high-visibility item, whether it be an ambulance or a critical social service, et cetera. And in this year, in most cases, it was different. The cuts and enhancements on the so-called town side were comprised primarily of two components. Some were intended to address unfunded mandates which came from town meeting. For example, town meeting asked for a comprehensive plan, more funds for rat abatement, improvements to urban forestry management, or scholarships without identifying appropriate funding sources. Town administrator said, in effect, okay. Let's do that. Let's raise revenues to fund those priorities rather than cut into essential services. And the second major component was there were cuts across the board, but those cuts were designed to have the least rather than the squeakiest impact. So the base budget cut two patrol positions from the police department budget against the department that at the time that had twenty or more unfilled open positions. The base budget cut a five thousand dollar line item from the fire department, a line item that had gone unspent and had returned five thousand dollars of free cash over the last few years. This is not to say that these are not important items to fund. It is to say that the decisions were made. To try to identify the reductions that would be least unpleasant were we forced to endure them. And on the school side, as you have presumably seen, there were staff cuts proposed, whether or not the override was successful. And in my opinion, the underlying principles of that sort of behavior should be praised, whether or not you agree with the specific details, dollar amounts, ratios between departments. And I believe the new town administrator, the school committee, and the select board should all be commended for taking that approach to this process, which was heavily influenced by a working group. Comprised primarily of department heads. And please note here, I was referring to the operating override, not the debt exclusion, which will get its own attention when we discuss those items later. As town meeting members, you should all be familiar with the budget and how to navigate it. And fortunately, it's accessible online. If you start on the town's homepage at BrooklineMA.gov and navigate to Budget Central. And there you will find historical data as well as projections broken down along many dimensions. The budget is far too large and complex to address fully in a single speech, and I'm going to touch on the larger themes tonight. You can read the full analysis in the combined reports. And I'm not going to spend more than this sentence talking about the inflows or outflows of the water and sewer enterprise fund, because it's not something that we really have control over. And other than one item in particular, I'm not going to talk in any detail tonight about the capital improvement program, because there are excellent descriptions of each item in our report, and there will be a vote on each. So save your questions for when those items are debated. Our report starts on page seven dash one of the combined report supplement, and we start with good news. Revenues are up four point nine percent from fiscal year twenty three. Property tax revenues were projected pre-override to grow by over five percent. Local receipts are up four point four percent from fiscal year twenty three. They're still lower than their peak in two thousand and twenty, but the positive trend is continuing. Balancing those increases are lower than inflationary increases in state aid for education and unrestricted government aid, as well as the phasing out of host community agreement funds. The single biggest expense in the budget is the allocation to the public schools of Brookline, and I'd like to remind everyone that town meeting does not oversee. Specific school budget line items. State law gives that authority to the school committee. We set the overall allocation of funds. And for fiscal year twenty four, the allocation is a hundred and thirty million, seven hundred and two thousand, three hundred and seventy six dollars. Last year, we noted that one-time funds had been used to cover shortfalls and that the contract agreement with the Brookline Educators Union would affect the fiscal year twenty four budget for the schools. And that we could expect to see a shortfall of six point five million dollars perhaps. And you may recall that the initial school budget request started with a significant shortfall, which was almost five million. There have been many questions about the school's budget and some facts that should be noted in it. That is that the budget includes the reduction of K eight, K eight sections from approximately two hundred and fifty to two hundred and forty. Resulting in the reduction of thirteen FTEs, reducing the number of math and literacy coaches specialists by seven point three FTEs. You'll also note that overall enrollment in the schools is down to ninety two point five percent of pre-pandemic numbers, and the overall staff is down to ninety point nine percent of pre-pandemic numbers. And. With that, overall salary costs have risen somewhat, and one of the reasons for this was noted in the report you received from the schools. The percentage of overall staff funded from the operating budget rather than from undersources has changed somewhat. And as well, it is likely that there are other explanations, including the head, actual headcount mix has shifted somewhat towards more highly compensated employees. Although in fiscal year twenty four, we are entering a new normal with respect to the pandemic, the effects of the pandemic make the past few years of year-over-year departmental budget comparisons less meaningful than they would otherwise be. But with that said. Most departmental budgets remained effectively level funded with respect to fiscal year twenty three. As noted, the building department and public works budgets increased in part to help address the maintenance underfunding noted in prior years. And to address the sanitation concerns and urban forestry initiatives encouraged by town meeting. And we remain on track in following our long-range plan to shore up our pension fund and OPEB funding deficits. One of the largest and most notable changes on the expenditure side is in the area of the collective bargaining reserve, whose appropriation has changed from one point two million in fiscal year twenty two. To three point four million dollars last year to four point five million dollars this year. And these expenses will be discussed at greater length in the discussion of warrant Article Two in a later session of this town meeting. So I'd like to talk about some of the concerns the advisory committee had with the budget as we originally received it. We noted that the police department's training budget had fallen from seventy four thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty to a proposed thirty one thousand, three hundred for fiscal year twenty four. And considered this to be doubly concerning, given the number of younger officers, especially in management positions. And the fact that in-person, hands-on training has been curtailed over the past few years due to the constraints of COVID. And consequently, the advisory committee. And consequently, the advisory committee recommended adding an additional $40,000 to the police department's budget. Ultimately, this funding was provided through one-time ARPA funds and thus may continue to be of concern in future budget cycles. Similarly, the advisory committee expressed concerns that the expansion request from the fire department for diversity, equity, and inclusion training was not funded in either the base or override budgets. The committee believes the fire department could benefit from such training and added $45,000 to the departmental budget for this purpose. And again, this funding was found this year through the use of one-time funds and should be assessed in future budget cycles. And I should note that these budget adjustments received strong support in committee votes, 20 to 0 to 4 for the fire department training, and 14 to 2 with eight abstentions for the police department. Committee also expressed concerns about the funding for certain vulnerable populations, specifically veteran services and the council on aging. With respect to veteran services, the committee did not recommend any changes to this year's budget appropriation, but noted discomfort with the department relying on its director to transport veterans in his personal vehicle, and expressed hopes that a vehicle or other funding for this purpose would be found in future budgets. And with respect to the council on aging, the committee did recommend expanding the council's budget in two areas. First, we recommend allocating additional funding for additional transportation initiatives for seniors. And second, we recommend that the council develop a strategic long-term plan to address the needs of an aging population. Our budget allocated an additional $100,000 for these purposes. The budget request before you finds the bulk of these funds via reallocating funds that have typically been reserved but unspent in prior years for financial support for students in vocational technical programs. And so that budget has been scaled downward to represent a more realistic reflection of the actual expenditures in this area. I'd also like to follow up on some of the concerns we expressed last year at this time. Last year, we noted the difficulty the town was having in hiring, and that the town had contracted with the Collins Center for Public Management to initiate a salary study. And the bad news is that that study was deemed inconclusive. But the good, or at least not so bad, news is that during the fiscal year '24 budget cycle, with the exception of hiring within the police department, which was still problematic, we heard fewer such complaints. And as we will see when we ultimately discuss article two, the overall police department compensation has been increased, which is hoped to have a positive impact on both morale and on the ability to hire. The second major concern we introduced last year was how slowly the town has been adjusting budgetary allocations to respond to broad changes in the world around us. I noted then that, quote, "Over the last 25 years, the world in which every department operates has fundamentally changed, yet over the years, the most common phrase you will have seen uttered in any departmental budget recommendation is, the department's budget is mostly flat," unquote. This remains true and must be closely watched, but as I noted earlier, it was a little less true for the fiscal year '24 budget than it was for fiscal year '23. Building DPW, the council on aging got noticeable increases to support new services. The planning department got its funding for a comprehensive plan. And the new town administrator has expressed his support for thinking about budgeting from a needs perspective, and has shown through his override proposals, the ability to make prudent trade-offs. And this year, the advisory committee has launched a budget review practices subcommittee that is collaborating with the town administrator to move our budget review earlier in the budget cycle. With all of that said, fundamental pressures around demand for services and inflation coupled with, with demand for services and inflation coupled with the proposition two and a half caps, we don't have any demand for inflation, means that the structural deficit problem continues to exist. We have done a good job in this budget cycle to wean ourselves from the infusion of pandemic-related stimulus, but we are still likely to require operating overrides in the future, and there is no reason to assume that the voters will continue to agree to operating overrides indefinitely. And indeed, the closeness of the dead exclusion vote we just had could be considered an early warning signal of this concern. And that's a good segue into the one capital improvement plan item that I did promise to talk about, which of course is the Pierce School. There will be debate on this item later tonight, as well as the two amendments for this item, and so I will limit my comments now to the advisory committee's overall position and how it has evolved. On May 11th, by a vote of 12 to 9, we recommended favorable action on the bonding in the then-recommended amount of $209 million. Last night, we took up the Von Scoyek Amendment, and by a vote of 15 to 7, amended our recommendation on this item to support the language of the amendment, which limits the bonding authority to $135 million. When the select board amendment is debated, we'll go into more details on our thinking, but the highlights of these debates include: A majority of the committee expressed concerns about the overall cost of the project and believes it is irresponsible for the town to assume so much debt. This majority is concerned about funding for future large-scale capital projects such as the Baker School. Some believe that the school's major defects can be corrected via renovation. Others believe that a full reconstruction can be done for significantly less money, and cited examples from elsewhere in the state by way of comparison. A minority believes that by definition, the town can afford to pay for the school because the voters provided the funding, and they believe that the many problems with the school's physical plans, such as its lack of ADA compliance and its layout not being conducive to a 21st-century learning environment, cannot be adequately addressed with an onsite renovation. Common sentiments expressed by both majority and minority opinions throughout the several debates on this matter included a sense that cost did not appear to be considered as seriously as it could have been during the design process, that getting information from the building committee was difficult at best, and that overall transparency, timely access to reliable information, was rarely at hand. The advisory committee also considered the Fisher Amendment, which it rejected by a vote of six in favor, 11 opposed, and six abstaining. And again, we'll explain our position in more detail during the debate on that amendment, but the summary is that a majority of committee members, including several who believe there is merit to the complaints which were filed with the OCPF, believe the language of the amendment is poorly written, is contingent on a specific finding that is unlikely to be forthcoming, even if the OCPF were to reject the complaint outright, and is likely to jeopardize bond council's ability to provide a clean recommendation. To conclude, here are the votes that are coming up, some tonight and some in future sessions. You will be asked to take several votes. You will be asked to vote on 36 capital improvement projects. The advisory committee recommends favorable action on each of them, including, as I mentioned, our amended recommendation for the Pierce project. You'll be asked to vote on three collective bargaining agreements when article two is debated. We have considered and recommend favorable action on two of them, and will be reviewing and making a recommendation on the third within a week. And last, but certainly not least, you will be asked to vote on the main budget request. By a vote of 21 to 0 with one abstention, the advisory committee recommends favorable action on the budget motion printed on pages 7-25 to 7-36 of the combined report supplement, noting that it has replaced its amendment on CIP item number 69 with the text of the Von Scoyek Amendment.
Actually, as worthy as Mr. Dowey's statement was, and it was very excellent, please do not applaud after anyone speaks. And certainly don't boo at his. Mr. Green, you are up next. But thank you for politely listening.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Bernard Green, Chair of the Select Board. I was asked by one of my colleagues on the Select Board whether my speech is going to be as long as Mr. Dowey's, and I said, no, it's also not going to be a substantive. This is a statement of the Select Board Chair that follows a presentation by the Chair of the Advisory Committee. And normally, I would thank the town staff and others who participated in the budget process. Thank everyone for the great work they performed for the town and discuss the Select Board's plans and ideas going forward. I will do some of that in this presentation. This year, the budget process did not start out as smoothly as normal, as Mr. Dowey described in greater detail than I will here, but we finally were able to reach an agreement between the advisory committee on the budget when the Select Board incorporated that the advisory committee increases in the police and fire budgets for training purposes, and found additional funds to rescind advisory committee cuts in the school budget. We have also agreed to fully fund the amount of the police contract as handed down by the state joint labor management committee, while at the same time continuing our appeal of the arbitrator's labeling of $800,000 of that settlement as a post-commission stipend. We agree that our police should be compensated comparably to our peer communities, although be careful, it's always not straightforward how to compare apples to apples between Brookline and other even similar communities. But nonetheless, we strive to provide a compensation package for our employees that is not out of line with what their neighbor employees receive. With respect to the post-commission stipend, we do not, I do not believe, I think this majority of the Select Board, do not believe that any public employee should be paid an additional stipend for being certified to do their work, whether it be police, fire, teachers, social workers, or engineers in DPW. Being certified to do a job is a basic requirement and is reflected in the base pay that is paid. We provide additional pay for educational achievement, such as the Quinn stipend in the police department and similar stipends, but for police having post-certification just means that they have not done things that have caused them to come to the attention of the post-commission because of those things being illegal or just bad. That's not something that we think is appropriate to have a separate stipend for. We are willing to pay the amount that was put in that category, however. And that, you know, I think it's important to accept the fact that, you know, we're not taking or we're not reducing the amount that we're willing to pay under this contract, but just making sure that the characterization of the post-stipend doesn't spill over into other contract negotiations. The police contract also with the recently negotiated fire union contract will be costly to the town, and finding the funds to pay them will be difficult and result in balancing of priorities. Not everyone will be happy, but we will try to be fair because we recognize the incredible value of our town employees, police, fire, DPW, all of them, as you know, do an incredible job. So let me go to the next part of this statement that is traditionally made by the Select Board Chair, and that is acknowledgement of the hard work that many people have done in our town to make it possible for us to function as a, I'll put it as a democracy, and you'll see where I'm going in a second. Some of you may recall that beginning in May 2019, I assumed the position of Chair of the Select Board and served until May 2021. I'm back. During my tenure earlier, COVID hit the world and was declared a pandemic on March 11, 2020. Much of the world economy, as you recall, and normal operations of political systems here and abroad were shut down. The Select Board, Town Meeting, and other functions of town government stopped operating in person. We were all introduced to the remote world. We learned at that point how indispensable certain people were, and this is my opportunity, or this is my segue to praising an organization, Brookline Interactive Group, our local cable access network, which along with our IT department, made incredible steps to ensure that despite the world being shut down, democracy in Brookline, Town Meeting, Select Board, Town Commissions and Boards continue to operate. And their work continues with meetings of the Select Board that are held currently in hybrid fashion, and the meeting of this Town Meeting, which is not hybrid, but is still supported by BIG and our IT department, and is broadcast to the world by BIG, and in November is planned to be held in a hybrid format, pursuant to statute or authority that we have to do that. The pandemic also brought out the best in other town departments, that because of the nature of their work, could not be performed remotely, such as police, fire, DPW, public health. Remember, we all were locked up in our homes, they were out in the street doing the work that they had to do that couldn't be done over Zoom, and we should really appreciate that, and we do. On a more general level, the Select Board and other departments of the town could not function, whether hybrid or in person, without the help of the staff of the Select Board Office. This is where I praise all the great people in the Select Board Office and throughout the town. So I'd like to acknowledge and thank our relatively new town administrator, Chaz Carey, who I'll talk about one thing specifically that is really a great achievement by him. Deputy Town Administrator Melissa Goff, who is incredible in terms of her understanding of town finances and how the town operates in ways that many of you don't see. Assistant Town Administrator for Operations Devin Fields, and of course, Devin Fields stepped up when we needed to go remote and figured out how to do it, and then did it. And, you know, without her, we wouldn't have been able to function as a local town government. We have a new Assistant Town Administrator for Finance Charles Young, also since the last Town Meeting, Budget Analyst Grants Administrator Tyler Belice Toler. Both of them are new since the last annual Town Meeting. Also want to thank people who do a lot of the work in the background that would, makes our operations possible, our senior clerk recording secretary Kate McGilvery, and licensing specialist Tiffany Souza, who prepares all those licensing hearings that we have every week, that I'm sure you all just love to listen to. Without the hard work and dedication of town departments, the town would not have been able to serve its residents during the difficult year, or the difficult last few years, and even today as we're moving out of the pandemic. Since our last annual Town Meeting, there have been additional important changes in town government with new staff and restructured town departments. So in addition to welcoming Charles Young and Tyler Belice Toler in the Select Board's Office, we have a new Finance Director in Lincoln Heineman, who came in in the fall of 2022, and a new Library Director, Amanda Hurst, who came in in August of 2022. And here's something that I hope you understand the importance of. On May 21, 2023, the town administrator recommended, and the Select Board unanimously voted to accept, the recommendation of Jen Pastor as Police Chief. A contract was negotiated, and she was appointed as our permanent chief on April 25. Many of you may have attended her swearing-in ceremony at the library on Wednesday, May 10. I understand that was a great ceremony. Unfortunately, despite avoiding it for three years, I had COVID that week, so I missed At the March 21 meeting of the Select Board, I paraphrased that great American President Gerald Rudolph Ford by saying that finally, Brookline's long nightmare with interim leadership in the police department was finally over, eliminating much of the uncertainty that has plagued the town and the police department for approximately 992 days. Our uncertainty began in July of 2020 when Chief Andrew Lipson resigned after, and I'm just going to, you know, say this, and a lot of people are not going to like this, but I will say it, after unjustified attacks on the Brookline Police Department by people who should have known better and who were channeling the bad and racist behavior of a few of the 16,000 police departments in this country, channeling that into the Brookline Police Department. That was painful, that was hurtful, and, you know, we suffered from that for a long time. Under Town Administrator Carey's leadership, however, we finally have a full Chief of Police, meaning not an interim Chief of Police, a Police Superintendent, which is the second person in command and does a lot of their office work, as I understand, and a full complement of deputy superintendents. So thank you, Chaz Carey, for that. We still have vacancies in the patrol ranks, but now that we are back on stable footing, hopefully, we can quickly fill those positions. It's not going to be easy. We have a lot of issues still outstanding, but we are on the track to resolving them. Finally, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the support we received from federal and state elected Finally, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the support we receive from federal and state elected officials, particularly our Federal Representative Jake Ottenclose, who has helped Brookline with, among other things, a two million dollar, what do we call it, earmark for the Brookline Bridle Path on Beacon Street in fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, a federal program that provides local funding. As you probably know, federal representatives as well as our state representatives field a lot of questions and pleas for help from their constituents. Jake Ottenclose has fielded four hundred requests for support and help with the federal bureaucracy since he became our representative. And I think that's, that's important. If you ever have a problem with Social Security Administration or some other bureaucracy, you're not gonna get anywhere going directly to them, but our congressional representative can, can help figure out how to fix the problem, and it's a very important role that they play. And of course, our own Tommy Petola, who sits in this body somewhere out there, who does so much for us and is also providing, has also provided funding for the Bridle Path as well as many smaller grants that he finds in various ways in the legislature to help organizations such as the Teen Center, Women Thrives, and many other organizations. And of course, our State Senator Cindy Cream, who is always ready to help Brookline when we call on her, and who's not our representative yet in Precinct Sixteen, Bill McGregor, but who will be elected at the upcoming election, I think on May thirtieth, unless somehow someone pulls together a really big write-in campaign. So those state and federal representatives play an incredibly important role in making our town run as effectively and efficiently as it does and helps address some of the financial limitations that we face. So with that, thank you, and that is a statement of the board's, board chair's statement of the Chair of the Select Board. Thank you.
And I was wrong, you can clap after presentations. You just can't interrupt presentations to clap. And no hissing or booing ever. All right. We will now turn to the actual consideration of the budget. This will begin with the conditions of appropriation. The budget is on the green supplement that you received on pages, paragraphs one through fourteen. In the supplement, pages twenty-five through thirty-one, supplement one to the combined reports. And I sent out an email that also contained a link to the supplement. Now, the conditions of appropriation are rules governing matters such as appropriations from one account to another revolving funds and similar items. I am assuming that you have reviewed them. It includes things like the Gulf Enterprise Fund, the Water and Sewer Fund, revolving funds. If anyone has any questions about them, they can approach the microphone. All right, is anyone strolling up? All right, if not, we will now go to the special appropriations. These are items fifteen through sixty-nine, which again are on the green supplement, pages thirty-one through thirty-five of supplement number one to the combined reports of Article seven. They are also specified by number in Table One at the back of the budget. Item sixty-four to sixty-nine require bonding and must be passed by a two-thirds vote. As a note, item sixty-nine is now the Pierce Bonding item. It is no longer item seventy. For each of the bonding items, we will take a vote on them after we have debated each of them. The other conditions that we will be going through will be voted on as part of the omnibus budget, but do not need an individual vote, but will rather just be voted on by majority as part of the omnibus budget. So I will now read through these special appropriations. The special appropriations include, beginning with paragraph thirty-five, appropriating money to raise and appro, can you hear me? Is this too? Okay, to raise and appropriate approximately one million dollars to resolve the special revenue account deficit as a result of COVID expenses that may not be eligible for reimbursement. And I hope you will apologize me for rounding numbers up or down. Raise and appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Chief Procurement Officer for town furniture upgrades. Raise and appropriate three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Building Commissioner with any necessary contracts over a hundred thousand dollars to be approved by the select board for the Brookline Village Library HVAC improvements. Thirty-eight, to raise and appropriate nine hundred thousand dollars to be expended under the approval or direction of the Police Chief with any necessary contracts over a hundred thousand dollars to be approved by the select board for upgrades or replacements of the police and fire department's radio infrastructure. Thirty-nine, to raise and appropriate two hundred thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Police Chief with any necessary contracts over a hundred thousand dollars to be approved by the select board for the equipment of and the, for the equipment and the body worn and in-camera program. Forty, to raise and appropriate five hundred thousand dollars with any necessary contracts over a hundred thousand dollars to be approved by the select board to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Public Works for traffic calming. Forty-one, to raise and appropriate seven hundred thousand dollars with any necessary contracts over a hundred thousand dollars to be approved by the select board to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Public Works for bike access improvements. Forty-two, to raise and appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars approximately to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Public Works for accessible pedestrian signals. Forty-three, to raise and appropriate four million six hundred and eighty thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Public Works with any necessary contracts over a hundred thousand dollars to be approved by the select board for rehabilitation of streets. Forty-four, to raise and appropriate five hundred thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Public Works with any necessary contracts over a hundred thousand dollars to be approved by the select board for the rehabilitation of sidewalks. Forty-five, to raise and appropriate eight hundred thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Public Works with any necessary contracts over a hundred thousand dollars to be approved by the select board for design work related to the Washington Street Rehabilitation and Complete Streets Program. Forty-six, to raise and appropriate five hundred and twenty thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Public Works with any necessary contracts over a hundred thousand dollars to be approved by the select board for the design of the renovation of the Amory Tennis Courts Parking and Halls Pond. Forty-seven, raise and appropriate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Public Works with any necessary contracts over a hundred thousand dollars to be approved by the select board for improvements to Monmouth Park. Forty-eight, to raise and appropriate two million dollars to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Public Works with any necessary contracts over a hundred thousand dollars to be approved by the select board for the renovation of Schick Playground. Forty-nine, raise and appropriate two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Public Works with any necessary contracts over a hundred thousand dollars to be approved by the select board for the renovation of playground equipment, fields, and fencing. Fifty, to raise and appropriate a hundred thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Public Works for the rehabilitation of town and school grounds. Fifty-one. Yes, do you have a question relating to one of these items?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
Who are you and what item? Please identify yourself and what I, you have to, a question in relation to, is it one that I have already raised? Okay, please state your question.
Clint Richmond, Precinct Six, had a question on article or item number thirty-nine related to police cameras. I was just-
I'm sorry, thirty-nine relating to oh, body worn cameras, yes.
I was just wondering, uh, who might be able to answer the question of what will be the public access to that, that video if this program is implemented?
The issue of body worn cameras will be coming up in different forum during this town meeting, including perhaps under the police collective bargaining agreements as well as a, an article further. So I think it is better to have that question answered during town meeting at that time. You are not approving that appropriation at this time, and you'll have the information you seek by the time you are voting on it, which will be June first, at the time of the appropriation of the budget.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Two fifty-one was to raise and appropriate three hundred thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Public Works with any necessary contracts to be approved by the select board and the Parks and Recreation Commission for the rehabilitation of tennis courts and basketball courts. Fifty-two, to raise and appropriate three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Public Works with any necessary contracts over a hundred thousand dollars to be approved by the select board and the Tree Planting Committee for the removal and replacement of trees. Fifty-three, to appropriate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Recreation Director for the renovation of the Soul Courtyard and to meet the appropriation transfer and to meet the appropriation transfer a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Recreation Revolving Fund balance. Yes, sir.
I'm waiting for fifty-five.
Oh, you're waiting for fifty-five, okay. Fifty-three, appropriate one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Recreation Director, oh, we just did that one. Fifty-four. Raise and appropriate three hundred thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Recreation Director with any necessary contracts to be approved by the select board and the Parks and Recreation Commission for tree work at Potterham Woods. Fifty-five, raise and appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Chief Procurement Officer for the school furniture upgrades. And you have a question? Please identify yourself by name and precinct.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Clint Richmond, Precinct Six. Again, I just want to call this body's attention to the preliminary report of the PFAS committee that you appointed, and that this is one of the items that that's representative of the kind of items that we've been discussing at that, at that meeting, at our meetings, to look for opportunities to avoid exposure to PFAS because furniture is often waterproofed or stained with this and treatment. And we have had a conversation with the Building Commissioner. He's been very cooperative, and just want to say we look forward to progress in addressing that problem.
Okay, thank you. Number fifty-six, to raise and appropriate two hundred thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Building Commissioner for HVAC equipment. Fifty-seven, to raise and appropriate nine hundred thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Building Commissioner for ADA renovations to town and school facilities. Fifty-eight, to raise and appropriate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Building Commissioner for elevator renovations. Fifty-nine, to raise and appropriate a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Building Commissioner for upgrades to energy management systems in town and school facilities. Sixty, to raise and appropriate one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Building Commissioner for public building fire alarm upgrades. Sixty-one, to raise and appropriate a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Building Commissioner for improvements to life safety systems and building security in town and school facilities. Sixty-two, to raise and appropriate one million dollars to be expended under the direction of the Building Commissioner with any necessary contracts over a hundred thousand dollars to be approved by the School Committee for minor renovations and upgrades to school buildings. Sixty-three, to raise and appropriate two million and twenty-six, two million plus dollars, or excuse me. Okay, two million, twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars to be expended under the direction of the School Superintendent with any necessary contracts to be approved by the School Committee for the expansion of classroom capacity in various schools. Now with item number sixty-four, we reach the first item that will need to be voted on with a two-thirds vote. So I will describe it. If you have any questions, please come to the podium. Please make sure your tablets are awake and that you are soon ready to be on the appropriate voting screen. The item sixty-four requests that the town raise and appropriate six hundred thousand dollars or any other sum to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Public Works with any necessary contracts over a hundred thousand dollars to be approved by the select board for storm water storm water improvements. And to meet the appropriation, authorize the Treasurer with the approval on the select board to borrow six hundred thousand dollars under General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section eight, five, as amended or accept, receive, oh, excuse me, or pursuant to any other enabling authority and authorize the select board to apply for, accept, receive, and expend grants, aid, reimbursements, loans, and all other forms of funding and financial assistance from both state and federal sources and agencies for such purposes. I do not see anyone standing to have any questions in relation to this, so we will now take a vote on this. Make sure that you're yes, I'm sorry, all of these will be recorded votes. Every vote from here on in, except for mundane motions like calling the question or things like that will be recorded votes. So that's why I said, take out your tablets, get ready to vote. No, 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 this is just, no, this is item sixty-four. This is just appropriation. I guess we didn't special appropriation number sixty-four. Hold on one second. special appropriation number sixty-four, hold on one second. Okay, Article seven, item sixty-four relating to appropriation for storm water improvements. You may you may start voting and you will have forty-five seconds, we need a two-thirds majority. If the vote, the vote is two hundred and twenty-eight yes, zero no. Three abstentions, that is a two-thirds vote and the motion passes, or the item passes. We now turn to item sixty-five of Article seven, which asks you to vote on whether to raise and appropriate two million dollars or any other sum to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Public Works with any necessary contracts over a hundred thousand dollars to be approved by the Select Board for water system improvements and to meet the appropriation authorize the Treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow two million dollars under General Laws, Chapter forty-four, eight, perence five, as amended or pursuant to any other enabling authority authorize the Select Board to apply for, accept, receive, and expend grants, aid, reimbursements, loans, and all other forms of funding and financial assistance from both state and federal sources and agencies for such purpose. Does anyone have any questions on this item? If not, we will take a vote on it, it requires a two-thirds majority to pass.
Two hundred and twenty-eight yes. Two no. Two abstentions.
Okay. Uh, the item is approved with a vote of two hundred and twenty-eight yes, two votes no, and two abstentions. We now move on to whether or not to approve item sixty-six of Article seven to raise and appropriate three million dollars or any other sum to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Public Works with any necessary contracts over a hundred thousand dollars to be approved by the Select Board for wastewater systems and to meet the appropriation authorize the Treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow three million dollars under General Laws forty-four, Section seven, perence one, as amended or pursuant to any other enabling authority and authorize the Select Board to apply for, accept, receive, and expend grants, aid, reimbursements, loans, and all other forms of funding and financial assistance from both state and federal sources and agencies for such purpose. Okay, make your tablets ready because we are now, oh, excuse me, we do have someone who has a question on this. Yes, could you please identify yourself by name and precinct? Is that mic on, I'm sorry. Now, could we have a live mic there, please, for Mr. Franco?
Hello, yeah.
Hello.
Uh, Town Meeting Member, uh, Jim Franco, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. Can someone tell me if this item and the previous item, if the money flows through the Enterprise uh, fund, or does it flow directly to the town? Thank you.
Flow directly to what?
Through the, to the town. Or does it go, does it go to the Enterprise Fund?
Um, Ms. Goff? Pardon?
Melissa Goff, Deputy Town Administrator, the debt service associated with those bonds are paid for within the Enterprise Funds.
Okay, thank you, any more questions? Okay, we will now vote, so make sure you are on the Zoom voting screen. Okay, drop down and you have forty-five seconds to vote. And the, uh, item passes with two hundred and twenty-seven yes, zero, no, and three abstentions. We now turn to item number sixty-seven, which asks you to vote on whether to raise and appropriate two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Public Works with any necessary contracts over a hundred thousand dollars to be approved by the Select Board for improvements at Robinson Playground and to meet the appropriation to authorize the Treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars under General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, one, as amended or pursuant to any other enabling authority and authorize the Select Board to apply for, accept, receive, and expend grants, aid, reimbursements, loans, and all other forms of funding and financial assistance from both state and federal sources and agencies for such purposes and to rescind a like amount voted at the November fifteen, twenty-twenty-two Special Town Meeting under Article One, Item Four, which item was inadvertently omitted from the warrant for such meeting. We have any questions or comments? Seeing that there are none, we will now start the vote on item sixty-seven. The motion, uh, or the item is approved with two hundred and twenty-nine yes, one no, and four abstentions. We will now vote on whether or not, or you will now vote on whether or not to uh, prove item sixty-eight, which is to raise and appropriate three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars or any other sum to be expended under the direction sorry of the Commissioner of Public Works with any necessary contracts over a hundred thousand dollars to be approved by the Select Board for improvements at Murphy Playground and to meet the appropriation authorize the Treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow three hundred and fifty-five thousand under General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, one, as amended or pursuant to any other enabling authority and authorize the Select Board to apply for, accept, receive, and expend grants, aid, reimbursements, loans, and all other forms of funding and financial assistance from reimbursements, loans, no, wrong one, from both state and federal sources and agencies for such purpose and to rescind a like amount voted at the November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two Special Town Meeting under Article One, Item Five, which item was inadvertently omitted from the warrant from such meeting. Any questions, comments? No, seeing none, we will now vote on whether or not to bond item sixty-eight of Article Seven. Please vote now. Item sixty-eight of Article Seven passes with two hundred and twenty-three yes, one no, and six abstentions. Before we get into the next article, which is likely to take up a little time, um, not yet, but I will be giving us a bit of a break, perhaps five to ten minutes, it will not go longer than ten minutes. Um, and before we begin that break, uh, I want to give you the rules of engagement. Well, actually, let's take the break now and then I'll tell you how long you can talk and those things, so stretch your legs now and then settle in for the long run. Thank you.
...
Oh, yeah, Ben. You're right. I don't know how that. It's not like prime today. Excuse me, we have an important announcement and frustrating technicality. The problem is if you take your tablets too far away from the home ship of the auditorium, you need to log back in. This means if you got cookies or went to the bathroom, you have to log back in and pre-register. Are you hearing me? Check to make sure that you are still connected to the meeting. Everyone chatting. You may not be connected to the meeting. If you're not connected, you cannot vote. Please come in. Make sure you're still connected to the meeting. We're still, no, we're not going to have a test vote. We're going to have a lengthy debate. And during it, you will need to make sure that you have reconnected yourself and re-registered and been let back into the meeting. Is that the correct way to put it? Okay. Okay. Sorry, we went on way too long, but we, so let's, for our break, so let's settle down. I am going to start with the initial presentations in one minute. Or less. It'd be nice to have lights tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
Thank you. All right. We are going to begin the discussion of item sixty-nine of Article Seventy, the Pierce appropriation issue. Now I need all of you to stop talking. Thank you. And again, if you took your tablet to get cookies or to the bathroom, you need to make sure that you are still logged into the meeting. Your registration may have been cut off. So if that happens, you will not be able to vote. So make sure that you are still as part of the meeting. Now. Some people have decided to speak in groups. Those of you such as Mr. Pearlman and Ms. Thal. You'll be speaking fairly early on. Please have your contingent come up to the front so that you can speak one after the other in the time that you have been allotted. I expect you to flow seamlessly. You will each have however much time you have given each other. Let's say you have twelve minutes. I will keep you to that time limit. If someone used up the time before the last person got up to speak, that is something you will have to apologize for afterwards because your time will have been used up. So Ms. Thal and Mr. Pearlman, be sure to have your people lined up to come sit in front so that they can get to the podium quickly and efficiently. Unless you are told otherwise by me and have been general granted permission earlier, you are limited to three minutes. Tomorrow, we will actually have a timekeeper debate style who will let you know when you're reaching your time limits, but right now you have to rely on me and my stopwatch. Um, when I tell you to stop, stop. Uh, when I say, you know, please finish up, it means finish your sentence. Do not finish your paragraph. Do not finish anything else. Say, thank you very much, please vote for against and leave. I think we are going to be here long enough and that will be sufficient. And you probably will have already said what you wanted to say. All right. So speaking of bumps in the road, there have been some twists and turns in the last twenty-four hours in relation to how we deal with Article sixty-nine and the Pierce funding. And that also affects how we are going to start out with addressing it. Because the Advisory Committee is the finance committee of the town meeting. It is the one who is the proponent of a motion to bond anything. So last night, it was discussing the Pierce appropriation and it considered the two amendments that had been filed, which we'll be referencing page-wise, but I think you know in a minute, but the Fisher Amendment and the Van Skoyek Amendment. Uh, well, the Fisher Amendment is on supplement two, page one of a lime green supplement. The, uh, Van Skoyek motion was posted, uh, last night. And I sent it out today. It incorporates language of his amendment um, into the original item sixty-nine. Um, item sixty-nine, as you know, originally, uh, as set out, appropriated two hundred and nine million dollars for appropriation. Appropriated the money to build a new Pierce school. After consideration, the Advisory Committee decided to incorporate the Van Skoyek Amendment, uh, limiting the amount of expenditure to a hundred and thirty-five million uh, to renovations. And so by twist of parliamentary procedure, that motion now becomes the main motion. So we will be hearing from the Advisory Committee on that first. Then we will be hearing from the Select Board. The Select Board sticks with the original motion, basically. It's like that's what we voted on, that's what we're presenting. So that's the original two hundred and nine um, million that you're more familiar with. And then we will be hearing, uh, as well from Mr. Fisher at some point, uh, talking about his amendment. And we will all be voting on these in order, um, or in proper parliamentary order, which I will discuss at the appropriate time. Um, but that is where we are right now. And so to begin the proceedings, I am going to call on Vice Chair of the Advisory Committee, Harry Friedman, to present the, what is now the main motion, which is found on, what, supplement four, page one. Yes, you have, did you want five minutes, Mr. Friedman? Yes.
Okay, yes, thank you. Um, Harry Friedman, Precinct Twelve, we're, uh, speaking on behalf of the Advisory Committee. When I was sixteen, I asked my parents for a car. I provided them with all the reasons I should have access to what would be our family's second vehicle. I could run errands. I could bring my younger siblings to different places. I could get to work if I ever had a part-time job or a summer job and so on. My folks agreed that a car might be necessary and asked what kind I, I wanted. I replied a Bentley with the steering wheel on the right, like in Britain. My dad, a federal government worker, was somewhat aghast and suggested a used Ford, um, might be more appropriate with the driver's seat on the left. Um, I responded that I really wanted a Bentley. He replied that so did he, but it wasn't about to happen for either of us, given the cost. We both ended up being somewhat frustrated, him at having a son whose tastes were beyond our means and me at having, at not getting a Bentley with the driver's seat on the right. Um, an aside for those of you who may be saying, just what we need on the town's finance committee, someone who thinks sixteen-year-olds should have Bentleys, but I have matured, but I digress. Well, these days, the Advisory Committee might be described having some frustrations like my father did. We have a school building process that might charitably be described as flawed. Schools are built to MSBA standards, whether or not we apply for MSBA funding. When we do go for such funding, half the budget ends up being ineligible for MSBA reimbursement. The wish list of what goes in the schools is done with no regard as to cost. The result is overbuilt schools that are exceedingly expensive to operate and way too much to construct in the first place. This lack of regard for cost, as well as the effect on the town's borrowing capacity, leads to property tax bills that have increased exponentially in recent years and make it hard for current homeowners, especially seniors on fixed incomes, to remain in Brookline. Advisory is also frustrated by the near total lack of regard by the school committee for the fact that other municipal departments also perform important functions and have fiscal needs. The schools cleverly funded their recent teacher contract with the just passed override. For reasons I do not understand, the town failed to do the same with known impending fire and police arbitration awards. And just as an aside, if anyone here thinks there were cries of anguish when it was rumored that a tiny portion of the school operating budget might be reallocated to public safety and the Council on Aging, they'd need just wait only until next year when we have to pay for these union awards. There isn't enough money and it's not clear where it's going to come from absent another operating override. Advisory looked at the Pierce project and felt that the cost was too high. We also foresaw cost overruns, given the difficulty of the physical site. Driscoll didn't have those issues. The high school did, both on the STEM wing and then having to deal with the MBTA when it was decided to build over the, uh, the BNA or the railroad tracks. It resulted in cost overruns in the tens of millions of dollars. So in order to avoid these problems and still try to meet the needs of the Pierce community, Advisory reached for a lifeline, which was the Van Skoyek Amendment. It provides renovation funds, costs less than the current proposal, and doesn't drag in the physical issues that will occur in a complete teardown. Advisory does so with the knowledge that while town voters did approve the Pierce debt exclusion, town meetings vote is a separate issue that requires a two-thirds vote from town meeting. The statute that requires this does not say, quote, "Town meeting must rubber stamp the election results," end quote. It requires town meeting to use its judgment in authorizing the bonding. Some may say, well, the town voted this way, so I'm going to do so too. That is their right and privilege. I criticize no one who votes that way, but I ask for the same forbearness for those town meeting members who look at the facts and come to a different conclusion from what the townwide voters did. Thirty years ago, when Gene Yaki died, Red Sox management declared that Fenway Park could no longer serve the needs of the team and a new ballpark would need to be built. The current one was beyond redemption. This was accepted as true until new owners came in and said, no, we think with changes, we can work with the old park. They were willing to do so and able to find architects willing and able to do so. The result is that we still have that old ballpark, but updated for the twenty-first century. Where there's a will, there's a way. Advisory feels the current Pierce is not beyond redemption and encourages a vote against the Select Board amendment and in favor of the Van Skoyek by a vote of fifteen in favor, seven opposed, and two abstentions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Um, and yes, that, uh, that motion was made, uh, which was just spoke for by Mr. Friedman and seconded, not surprisingly, by Mr. Van Skoyek. I now ask for Mr. Green of the Select Board to come up, who is speaking in favor of, uh, the Select Board, whiskey substitute motion, which is found on supplement one, page thirty-five of the Green, uh, handout. And it is being moved by Mr. Green and seconded by Ms. Ash Kanazi.
And I assume that my crew will also be part of this presentation?
Your crew, yes, you and your crew have twelve altogether.
Okay. Ready? Pardon me? Yes. I was told that, um, when I previously spoke, the seal behind me made a halo over my head. Um, I'd like to get a picture of that if anyone has that. Okay, good evening, Madam Moderator. I am Bernard Green, Chair of the Select Board, on whose behalf I'm speaking tonight and also co-chair of the Pierce School Building Committee, along with Helen Chalubski. Michael Sandman and Jamie Yadoff and I will share this, this presentation on why town meeting must vote favorable action on item seven, actually, it's what, it's item sixty-nine now?
Yes.
Um, of the budget, the Pierce appropriation. I will give a brief introduction. Uh, then Jamie and Michael will touch on the major issues that have come up in this discussion and at the end I will off, offer some closing remarks. The Select Board, by a vote of three to one, when we had just four members, on April twenty-fifth, uh, voted favorable action on the original, uh, motion, uh, for the Pierce, uh, renovation, uh, the Pierce reconstruction. So there have been many claims, questions, assertions, and other stuff thrown up against the wall that, in my humble opinion, um, may have been intended to confuse and distract. To cut through the fog, what we're going to try to do is to focus on just the most important issues that we think you'll need to understand to make a sound decision. We will particularly focus on the equity-related problems of the Pierce school that we all know about, either through tours of the school, being parents, going to the school, or even just watching the videos on, on YouTube. These problems, uh, hopefully will be fixed by the project voted by the voters on May second and appropriated by this body tonight. Not a renovation proposed on, uh, preliminary work done, uh, by, uh, our, 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 our team, uh, in two thousand and twenty-one, after which they said that, given that it does not meet program requirements, we do not recommend any further review of option R one, renovation only. But what we're being proposed, what's being proposed to replace the proposal voted by the voters is something that was preliminary and if accepted would require us to go way back and start over again to make this preliminary, uh, skeleton even a meaningful, uh, proposal for a school. If we fail to rebuild, uh, not renovate Pierce now, the problems in that school and others will not magically disappear. They will continue until we are forced to act. At that point, the cost will be exponentially greater than it would be if we, uh, if we acted right now and approved, uh, item sixty-nine, uh, the appropriation. So I'd like to, uh, start off with Jamie Yadoff, Principal at, uh, Pierce School, who'll give us a, a really, uh, up close and personal view of what it's like to teach at Pierce.
Ms. Yadoff, you have about, um, five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jamie Yadoff and I am the proud principal of the Pierce School. I started working in Brookline in two thousand and five, having come from teaching in Lexington for five years. I was originally hired to teach seventh grade and my classroom was on the second floor of the historic building. Unlike those who taught in Unit A or Unit C, I had walls and a door, so I felt pretty lucky, despite the fact that the only student bathrooms were a full flight down in a building with no elevator. For those of you who haven't been to Pierce, it was designed as four separate zones. The nineteen-seventies building houses Units A, B, and C. Unit A has classrooms with no walls or doors. Unit B has a mix of classrooms with some walls and doors, though in the case of several, you need to walk through one classroom to access another. And Unit C is a stack of five classrooms, which have some walls, but are all attached via open staircases and lack interior doors. The adjacent historic building has all closed space classrooms and offices, some of which have been converted into teaching spaces and bathrooms. In my first year teaching at Pierce, it wasn't long before we had our first student injury that required crutches. And I had to watch an awkward middle school student sit on her bottom and scoot up and down the stairs, one step at a time, for every transition. Since then, we have had first grade students, first grade parents carry their wheelchair-bound child up and down the stairs. We've had countless children on crutches navigate those stairs, losing minutes of instructional time to leave class early to avoid the crowd going down and then arriving to the next class late because the transition distance between buildings is so great. We've had students sustain serious life-altering injuries and unable to return to school for extended periods of time because our building could not accommodate them. We've had substitute teachers show up and be unable to get to the classroom where they were assigned. None of this is okay with me as an educational leader, and I hope it's not okay with you either. Back in two thousand and five, we had just about five hundred and fifty students and were a three-section school with two beep classrooms. In the next eight years, we grew rapidly, displacing beep and becoming a four and five-section school. Classrooms were added in Unit A. Walls were built in hallways to create new learning spaces. Learning Center teachers started sharing classrooms as EL teachers did. We rented space at the teen center for music. We rented space in an adjacent building for middle, middle school classrooms, and ultimately we took over the Spurber Education Center. Our students now travel outside between three separate buildings. Most impacted are our kindergartners and first graders, who in order to have classrooms with walls and doors must be in the historic building, and our seventh and eighth graders who are struck, who are, um, spread across all of the buildings and travel outside every forty-five minutes regardless of weather. Our students lose as many as eighteen school days each year to transition time. For a student who is in Pierce from kindergarten through grade eight, that is nearly a full year of lost learning time as compared to other students in Brookline schools. Let me be clear. Pierce School is an outstanding school, but that is in spite of our building and not because of it. Pierce has made do without best practice facilities for decades, but I believe Brookline students deserve fundamentally sound learning spaces. Spaces that allow students to fully focus on instruction. Spaces that allow for a school schedule that is driven by sound educational pedagogy. Spaces with functional, accessible bathrooms adjacent to learning. Spaces that can be safely secured in an emergency. Spaces that welcome all our community members through our doors. As I understand it, there are two proposals before you tonight. One would fund the complete Pierce School program, plan as a four-section, pre-K to eight school with three beep classrooms. This plan accommodates all of our enrolled students, limits transition time, and creates right-sized common spaces. The other proposal limits funding to what was estimated two years ago as the cost of a code-only renovation.
You have thirty seconds.
That initial code-only design would have reduced us to a maximum of three-section school, forcing redistricting of at least a quarter of our families and would not and would not have reduced transition time or increased adjacencies for any of our programming. It would not have addressed the inherent flaws of the current building, would not be a net-zero design, and has not gone through any meaningful or thoughtful engagement with the Pierce community, and does not include space for beep classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not my time. Thank you, Jamie. Now, while Mike Sandman comes up to the podium, I'd like to just make sure that you're aware of the roadmap here. Jamie told you about what it's like at Pierce now. Mike's going to talk about why we need the new rebuilt school and why specifically it is a financially prudent thing to do.
Thank you, Bernard, and thank you, Jamie. I'm Mike Sandman, Select Board. I wonder if I could have my slides up, please? There we go. So, ladies and gentlemen, tonight, Pierce opponents will try to feed you a lot of baloney. Next slide, please. Baloney slice number one. Majority? I don't need no stinking majority. We voted the Pierce margin was 50% higher than the margin for the top Select Board candidate. Was the Select Board election legitimate? Since 2002, oh, around 3,000 debt exclusions were confirmed by representative town meetings and city councillors in Massachusetts, and zero were turned down. At least a dozen of those were, had margins of under a half a percent, one-third of what the margin was in Brookline. Next slide, please. Baloney slice number two. They put $212 million on signs, knowing full well that the cost net to Brookline taxpayers is $174 million. Before the election, you saw lots of signs saying that, but they omitted the 38 million dollars of state aid earmarked for rebuilding Pierce. By law, we do have to vote for $209 million in bonds, but we won't offer bonds beyond the net cost after MSBA reimbursement, $174 million. Not a small amount, but 212, that was deceptive. Ask yourself, weren't those signs deliberately misleading? Ask yourself, should we trust the Pierce opponent's facts now? Next slide, please. They say that renovation is feasible, timely, and lower cost. It'll cost $135 million worth 170 versus 174 million, and we can get right to work on it. But we'll need to run a new election or get the legislature to pass a special act, which will delay the project. Either, either route would take months while costs continue to rise. It took a year to restart Driscoll after the Baldwin-Driscoll override failed, and we already had Driscoll plans. For Pierce, the architect would have to start all over again. Here's what Town Council says. We would have considerable obstacles to overcome if the town wanted the project to move forward as amended. I'll just leave it at that. Next slide, please. Baloney slice number four. They misstate our debt policy. Opponents to $174 million say we've exceeded the 6% debt level set by our financial policies. That is baloney. We have two types of debt. Dollars borrowed without an override, which our policies do limit to 6%. We also have bonds secured by the revenue from an override that guarantees the stream of income necessary to pay for those bonds. That is not limited to 6%. And total debt will actually decline starting in 2026, even when we rebuild Pierce. Next slide, please. No baloney. You can see in the top line, debt incurred by our capital improvements plan spending, 6% year after year. The next line, debt covered by debt exclusions, and you can see the percentage of prior year's net revenue actually begin to decline. And total debt does the same, out to FY '29, and continues after that. More broadly, our total debt is slightly less than 2.5% of assessed property value, which is half of the 5% cap imposed by state law. Next slide, please.
You have 30 seconds, Mr. Sandman.
Baloney slice number five, the level of debt. You can see how our total debt will increase if we go ahead with Pierce, but then you can see how it will decline. Next slide, please. Renovate instead of rebuild is a pile of baloney. The opponents to rebuilding deny that the election result is conclusive, deny that it's legitimate, put up misleading signs about the net cost, claim that renovation would cost only $135 million, but that cost would escalate if we have to go back to square one. Misinterpret our financial policies to say that we're in debt beyond our fiscal policies when we are not. They warn about our increasing debt, but don't tell us that it starts to decrease in 2027, even with rebuilding Pierce. Last slide, please. Vote yes on the Select Board motion to accept the election results and rebuild Pierce, and no on the Fisher Amendment. Thank you.
Okay, to quickly wrap up, no doubt in anyone's mind that the Pierce School is a problem, and a problem that we have to fix by rebuilding it, not by slapdash renovation. That won't work. Vote yes on item 69 for the children, for the teachers, for the residents of Brookline Village, and for the town of Brookline. In the audience, we have a number of people who I urge you to ask questions of. We have our State Representative Tommy Vitolo, but also from our owners, project managers, we have Jen Carlson and Jim Rogers. We have from the school committee, who do we have? We have Valerie Freitas, Andy Liu, Dr. Guillory, Helen Chalupski, and David Pearlman. Please ask them questions to fill in any gaps in the discussion. Oh. And Pierce, from the architectural firm, sorry. Please ask them questions to fill in any gaps that you see in our discussion or the discussion of the proponents of the Van Scoyak amendment. Thank you.
But do so at the back of the room, please, and I now call the contingent organized by Ms. Thall to come speak and to integrate your your remarks seamlessly into, well, approximately 15 minutes, since that's what was given to the other side. Thank you very much.
All right. Hello. I am Carolyn Thall, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 16 and AC member on the school subcommittee, speaking for myself. I'm also a 12-year veteran PSP parent, former PTO board member, BEF board member. I'm a school supporter. I support investment in our schools in teaching and learning. With my friend John Bassett, I ran the Spend Smart campaign, and I am very proud of the work we did representing so many residents, and we did it without mudslinging, without personal insults, or fiery bullying rhetoric, some of which has been on display right here this evening. I'm very proud to say I do not behave that way or treat my colleagues and neighbors that way. We were and are committed to being analytical and not ideological. We ran a great campaign and had a remarkable result. Here in Town Meeting, Spend Smart still opposes the $210 million appropriation, consistent with our objections to the Pierce plan all along. The process was deeply flawed, the plan is excessive, and this course of action is unhealthy and unsustainable for Brookline. I will proudly be voting no on the Select Board motion.
Richard Nangle, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 15. I'm a vegetarian. I wouldn't eat baloney, and I wouldn't feed it to you. You're going to get a well-balanced meal right here. When I read the Jaws on Murphy complaint about the allegedly unlawful communications influencing an election, my first thought was that if such a document came across my desk while I was reporting for the Worcester Telegram and Gazette, I would immediately approach the city desk and ask for space on the front page. The story would draw immediate outrage from the community. I would follow up with a story about what the Office of Campaign and Political Finance has done in the past with such complaints and what referral to the Attorney General would entail. Then I would want to talk to people who sent the emails that allegedly influenced an election. I would want to know what their motivation was. I would contact their superiors for comment and ask elected officials to weigh in. If a vote to affirm an election result was approaching a community board or commission, I would want to know whether that board or commission would actually do it, given the serious charges. I would do all of that, knowing that it was a big story that deserved close attention and that it would play out for an extended period of time. Maybe people would be disciplined. The Worcester City Council, if such a thing happened in Worcester, would be indignant over the anti-democratic actions of the school department. Worcester County, in the time that I was there, was heavily influenced in its politics by the presence of assertive journalism that made the political system accountable. Here's what would happen in Worcester. No one would take it lightly. No one would pretend it didn't happen. No one would shoot the messenger or accuse him of being Donald Trump. But why? How is Worcester different from Brookline? The people of Worcester County are used to having a large newspaper covering their community and holding public officials accountable. Brookline has not had any of that for several years. We must remember that the TAB stopped being a newspaper several years before they told us officially that they had stopped being a newspaper. So there has been no one holding public officials accountable. Nobody held the school department accountable for the Pierce project. There were public meetings that were not noticed, closed to the public, and for which minutes are unavailable. That's outrageous. It's unacceptable. I would have had a field day writing about how the education plan, which determines the amount of space in the school building, was hatched behind closed doors. I would also have had a field day with a transportation board that took a dive on Closing School Street, that said in a public meeting that it supported the Pierce question and would leave School Street until later because closing it would cause some people to vote no on Pierce. There was no coverage of this, and there should have been. Now we have a new newspaper in town. So far, I like what I see. They will never run out of good stories to write. But what was the reaction when the Brookline News covered the OCPF complaint about the school department correspondence? Some people said, why did they have to write that? Why did they do that? Well, that's what happens when you've been in a news desert for too long. What we do here tonight will not go unnoticed, and as this complaint makes its way through the state government and possibly the courts, it will be covered, and the spotlight is on all of us now. And that brings me to the Fisher Amendment. It's simple and succinct. If the school department is cleared by OCPF, the project moves forward. Otherwise, it does not. The Fisher Amendment is plausible deniability. It's a way for us to support Pierce without supporting government wrongdoing. The Van Scoyak Amendment offers us the same opportunity. We have two opportunities to cleanse ourselves of what the school department did. Personally, I want nothing to do with what the school department did to influence this election, an election that brought out thousands more voters than any previous town election. Therefore, I will support the Fisher Amendment and/or the Van Scoyak Amendment. It's our way out, and we should take it. The state will be watching. So will the press, at last. In his memo yesterday, the town administrator acknowledged that appearances of conflict of interest were not avoided. So there's more to come. In closing, I received an email from a constituent who has lived in my precinct for two years and who had read about the OCPF complaint. He wrote to me, "I lived in Asia for 26 years before moving to Brookline, and simply put, these sorts of actions are something I would expect to see in an authoritarian, developing country, not in the cradle of American democracy. Donald Trump's election denying an interference is horrible and criminal, but acts like those that have occurred in Brookline ahead of the election also rot the foundations of our government." And I say to him, I couldn't agree more. To that end, you can expect that Spend Smart will be active in the next election, supporting the politically disenfranchised 48.7% of Brookline voters, by the official tally, who cast a no vote on question one, erroneously thinking the school department would never put its thumb on the scale. A lot of you are probably wondering why you would want to snatch defeat from the jaws of victory. But at what price, victory? What price?
Thanks, Richard. We're so eloquently talking about the issues of illegal government communications influencing an election. My name is Pamela Lodish. I'm currently a Town Meeting Member from Precinct 14, and I stand here with other participants from Spend Smart Brookline's ragtag group. I've been involved in the political scene in Brookline for a very long time. I was on the school committee for nine years, two years as chair, and for the past 25 years, I've been on the advisory committee. I often feel as if the AC is just a rubber-stamp committee. We analyze budgets for town-wide departments, but in actual fact, we have very little opportunity to make meaningful changes to budgets that are presented to us by the town administrator. I wish we did have more of an impact. That's why I'm standing here to tell you how important it was for me to join forces with a very small Spend Smart group who worked to convince voters to just say no. Tonight, we're faced with voting to authorize the debt exclusion for Pierce. It takes 2/3 for a reason. We can all agree that the question passed, not overwhelmingly, but then by the narrowest of margins, 51 to 49. That's not anywhere near the 2/3 of the voters. The no voters are disenfranchised. I heard from many no voters. One wrote to me, "So glad there are such level-headed people like you on the advisory committee. I was so upset about the election results." Where is this town headed? Pierce, and from another, "What a shame that we will be engaging in this Pierce School process, and at what large expense. You surely did so much to try to avoid this." During the recent yes-and-no campaign, we heard from Fred Wang, a former member of the school committee. His thoughts resonate with me. He wrote that he knows firsthand how easily wants morph into essential needs in the project design process. It's not with malicious intent, but there is little or no incentive to have the difficult needs versus wants discussion during the design process when it can really make a difference. Harry Friedman from the advisory committee talked about that as well this evening. Very rarely is there somebody willing to be able to play the bad guy to implement cost control during the design process. External fiscal oversight should be involved in these projects from day one, not at the end. I was proud to be part of the Spend Smart Brookline. If you consider me one of the bad guys, so be it. The design process was seriously flawed. The proposed high price of the school building project is simply the latest recurring painful and unusually destructive result of the underlying flawed design process. However, we can also all agree that something significant has to be done to Pierce School. But I would rather, and I stood in Coolidge Corner a few weeks ago, just before the election, talking to potential voters, and I told every one of them that I would rather vote for $100 million debt exclusion to build affordable housing in Brookline than I would spend $212 million for Pierce School. I don't think we can find 10 TMMs in this room tonight that don't agree that something has to be done to Pierce School and the Pierce School community. Their time has come. But $212 million? That's where I don't agree. If Town Meeting approves such a large expenditure, even deducting monies from MSB, MSNBA, MSBA, I always get that mixed up. How can we support larger capital projects that this town needs? I will be voting for John Van Scoyak's amendment, and I thank him for filing it. It gives me hope that we can be more prudent. And don't forget that nearly 49% of the voters agree with him and with me. Thank you.
Good evening. Jocelyn Murphy, Town Meeting Member in Precinct 16 and member of the advisory committee, speaking for myself. I'm also a proud graduate of the Runkel School in Brookline High School, and I support good education and good government in Brookline. I will be voting in favor of the Fisher Amendment, against the Select Board substitute motion, and in favor of the Van Scoyak Amendment and main motion for three reasons. First, because I'm aware that a debt exclusion must meet two distinct thresholds. Voting in favor of a debt exclusion authorizes the town to access excluded debt to fund a project, and the vote of town meeting authorizes the appropriation itself. To be clear, I accept that the voters authorized the debt exclusion by a majority vote. However, because of the thorough work of a Precinct 16 colleague and others who serve on the fiscal advisory committee, I am persuaded that the Pierce School building project as it is currently designed is not only the result of a substantially flawed process, but is also fiscally irresponsible. Second, I've heard the voices of Brookline's residents, who are on low and fixed incomes and are afraid that they and others will not be able to remain in Brookline under the significant tax burden that will result from this appropriation. I've also heard the voices of Brookline parents, who believe their children should have a fully accessible neighborhood school. I agree. There must be another solution that solves a Pierce School's deficiencies and is also respectful of Brookline's low and fixed income residents and taxpayers. Mr. Van Scoyak's amendment offers one solution. The third reason is because I support democracy. On the morning of Election Day, I complained to the town administrator and superintendent of schools about the correspondence that was delivered on taxpayer-funded resources by high-level employees of the public schools of Brookline to the parents of 7,000 public schools of Brookline students from the time the Proposition 2 and 1/2 questions were placed on the ballot up to the day before the election. In this democracy, we, all of us, are entitled to free and fair elections, regardless of our political thinking. In Anderson versus the City of Boston, the Supreme Judicial Court determined that elections are not free or fair when the government interferes by using taxpayer-funded public resources to advocate for or against a particular candidate or ballot question. Some of you have referred to this complaint as political BS and a "nothing burger." Others have referred to those who have complained about these communications...
No applause. Excuse me. Ms. Murphy, you have 30 seconds.
...as rogues or Trumpian election deniers. I unequivocally reject these characterizations and ask you, is this the message that you wish to teach your children? That it's okay to disobey the law to suit your purposes? A $212 million elementary school, regardless of which portion of the cost is paid by whom, is simply too much for Brookline's taxpayers to bear. Please join me in voting against the Select Board substitute motion and in favor of the Van Scoyak Amendment and main motion, and in supporting a Pierce School building project that is fiscally responsible and untainted by government interference. Thank you.
Mr. Pearlman and contingents? Contingences? Constituents? Fellows? Do you have people speaking with you, Mr. Pearlman, or just you? Okay. You have five minutes. Oh, no, you're producing... You're also speaking about the general school budget, or not? Okay, five minutes.
David Pearlman, School Committee Chair and Town Meeting Member, Precinct 15. Tonight, I speak to you on behalf of the unanimous school committee. Last Thursday, May 18th, the school committee voted 9, 0 to 0 to unanimously recommend a town meeting vote to bond the full $209.9 million for the Pierce project. At the same meeting, the school committee voted 9 to 0 to oppose the Fisher Amendment because it would delay the Pierce project with significant adverse implications for stakeholders and town finances. Escalation costs in building projects are calculated 4% per year. If a year goes by before the OCPF issues a ruling, this would increase the cost of the Pierce project by 8.4 million. The school committee also voted 9 to 0 to oppose the Van Scoyak Amendment to bond the Pierce project at $135 million. That amendment is now the advisory committee's main motion. The school committee unanimously opposes the $135 million proposal for several reasons. First, the voters of Brookline are presented the $174.9 million after MSBA reimbursement plan, not $135 million plan. The school committee chooses to respect pursuing the vision that our town voters were presented and passed in a townwide vote. Second, there is no ready-to-go $135 million renovation plan. There was a feasibility study in 2021 that analyzed several potential options for a Pierce project, and as a part of that analysis, one of those options included the Option R Code Upgrade Plan. Even that was not $135 million. It was really $137.7 million back in 2021. Escalation costs in building projects are running a minimum of 4% per year. Thus, $137.7 million in 2021 is about $148.2 million today. Add another $9 million for geothermal energy, and we're at $157.2 million. Add two years to go back to the drawing board, develop new design plans, and we're at a best-case scenario base price of $170 million. The Option R Plan would give us nothing close to what the Pierce community needs or what basic principles of equity require. It would also mean we lose current MSBA reimbursement. The Option R Plan was for code upgrades and basic renovation only. To fully accommodate the Option R Plan, we would need to downsize the existing Pierce School from four sections to at best three sections, more likely two and a half. That's because in order to bring the building up to code within its existing footprint, we would need to take space away from current uses, including classrooms. New ramps, elevator shafts, entrances, exits, wider hallways, wider bathroom berths, a larger cafeteria, gym and auditorium. All-new piping, wiring and circuitry require additional space. Walling off each of the 16 open concept classrooms and rerouting hallways so that our children in the affected wings can concentrate again requires additional space. Remodeling building traffic flow from the current labyrinth so that we can regain lost learning time from transition breaks requires additional space. Relocating instructional activities currently undertaken in lofts, hallways and other substandard areas necessitates additional space. With all these needs for extra space, but only the existing footprint with which to accommodate it all, something would have to go, and that something would inevitably include lots of classrooms. These space considerations do not even factor bringing beep back into the building, upgrading science and language labs for our middle schoolers, creating collaboration spaces for students and staff, improving arts, physical education and recreation facilities, and equitably providing for other basic 21st century school resources present at our other school buildings. The $174.9 million building includes all of these features in addition to ADA accessibility and code upgrades. It has been stated by some opponents of the $174.9 million after reimbursement plan that Triskel and Ridley have some seats available, therefore it's okay to downsize Pierce. Such thinking is short-sighted. First, in that it looks at classroom space linearly when there are additional pullout and other programming uses for classrooms, and second, in that it applies hyper-current enrollment conditions to the entirety of a 75- to 100-year trajectory that is the desired life of a school building. Furthermore, as soon as this fall, the town could be voting on zoning changes to comply with the state MBTA Communities Law, which could see Brookline asked to add 6,990 new units of at least two-plus bedrooms. With the planning department looking to accommodate this new construction entirely along Harvard Street, why would we spend $135 million, really $170 million, to make one of our two Harvard Street schools functionally smaller than it is today? Buildings should never be planned with only the present in mind, but also the future. There is much better qualitative value with a $174.9 million plan. It's only a $5 million difference from the reality of what the $135 million plan might look if we were in a position to pursue it. The $174.9 million plan is voter-approved. It is the most fiscally prudent path forward. Please vote yes on the Select Board amendment, and if the Select Board amendment passes, then no on the Fisher Amendment and yes on the bonding of the $209 million for the Pierce project. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher, can you please come to the podium? This is Mr. Julian Fisher, who is the proponent of the Fisher Amendment, which he will now explain to you, which is found on the lime green supplement two at page one. Mr. Fisher is moving this motion, and you need a second, and I need a name of your second. Someone who is seconding your motion, and I... Oh, it's Jocelyn. Thank you. Ms. Murphy, yes. Seconded. You have three minutes, Mr. Fisher.
I'm Julian Fisher, Precinct 15, and I'm actually not here to talk about the Pierce project.
Could you just speak closer to the mic?
Closer, closer to the mic. Okay. Julian Fisher, Precinct 15. I'm here not to talk about the Pierce project or even my amendment, per se. I'm really here to talk about the future of Brookline and the town. This is more of a thought piece for all of us. Call me a liar, but in five years, you may be calling me from a different area code or a different zip code. Within five years, some of you or many of you will not be here as town meeting members, not because you've lost an election, but because you won't be living in Brookline anymore. I decided to get involved and speak out because I have a deep concern for a town that I've been in for 40 years and its future from financial, legal, and above all, moral endpoints, which is why I submitted the amendment that I did. I have a strong academic interest in income inequality and its effect on the American middle class. This led me to produce a wide-ranging photo essay on this topic, and it's been exhibited in a number of major universities from coast to coast. Brookline is largely middle class. Lower-middle class, middle-middle class, upper-middle class, but largely middle class. In the next few years, a number of the single-family dwellings that the middle class lives in in Brookline, in your neighborhoods, will have been sold because the owners, as Jocelyn noted, some on fixed incomes, some in retirement, are facing hefty maintenance costs and significantly new higher real estate taxes, which will go 10% higher. These single-family dwellings will have been redesigned or shredded to become two- and three-family dwellings, each unit selling for $2.5 to $3 million. I do not exaggerate. And this is not considered affordable housing. But that is what is happening right now all around us, all over town, and plainly visible to anybody who walks around or drives around. And I'm not exaggerating. You can see it. You do see it as you drive around.
You have 10 seconds.
Look in your mailbox. These flyers are coming around. We moved to Brookline and we live in Brookline for its service.
I'm sorry, please finish. Please finish.
The exchange now is, do we pay debt service or lose town services? That's what we face. So that's the real issue. Debt service, town services. Do we want to live where there are diminished town services and increased debt service? I don't.
Thank you. Mr. Van Scoyak? You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. John Van Scoyak, former, for 30 years, Precinct 13 Town Meeting Member, and now in my second term on the Select Board. And it is as a second-term member of the Select Board that I stand before you tonight. But my heart is with all of the town meeting members in this room because when you spend 30 years in this room having discussions like this, you grow to sort of love these kinds of discussions. And they go in many directions. Some people choose the route of glib presentations, sarcasm. That's not what I'm going to give you tonight. I am going to try to, as quickly as possible, correct a couple of misstatements that were made, and I'm kind of surprised at at least one of them. The statement about outstanding debt and percent of per capita income was a misrepresentation of what you can find in your own budget books. You will see in the chart that there is a line that says, "A, Outstanding Debt as a Percent of Capital Income." And that has grown to over 11%. And then you will see a footnote that says, "A, Town Policy, Outstanding Debt as a Percent of Capital Income Not to Exceed 6%." That's in the book. It was misquoted tonight, and I wonder why. I wonder why. That measure is a measure of whether taxpayers can afford the impact of debt on their tax bills. It's the one aspect of the presentation of the Pierce Plan that you don't seem to hear the advocates of a $209.9 million Pierce Project talk about. And guess what? Even if there wasn't a line "A," there would be your tax bill, the tax bill of the average homeowners in Brookline. They don't need to go to the budget book to know that a town policy, which has been exceeded, tells them that they are stretched in their ability to afford their tax bills. All they need to do is look at their tax bills. So let's at least give them credit for that. Taxpayers know when they're being stretched, and they are being stretched. And that's why the vote is close. So let me now say a bit about the proposal that the advisory committee approved last night. $135 million would be the maximum budget for a plan that addresses all of the accessibility issues in the Pierce School. And with great love and respect for Jamie Yanoff, she made a really good presentation, but it kind of overlooked that what we're offering as an alternative to the $209.9 million plan is a $135 million project that addresses all of the accessibility issues in the existing Pierce School. Does anyone in this room believe that when there is a facility in Brookline that falls short of sufficient accessibility compliance, that the solution is to demolish the building? That's what actually is being argued in this case. Nothing short of demolishing the building will suffice. Not even a $135 million proposal.
Could you please finish up, Mr. Van Scoyak?
I will. Thank you very much. And as to that number, you've heard it said, "Oh, you know, David did all this math." The numbers that are in the school... The, excuse me, school building committee's presentations, mysteriously, if it's a number for addressing just the accessibility needs, with the passage of time, it keeps getting larger. I sent you a PDF, all of you, earlier tonight, which was from September of 2021, that had the price tag at $90 million. By December of 2021, it had grown to $137 million.
Mr. Van Scoyak, you have to finish.
Yes, I will, and sorry to have gone on if I stretched my time. What I want you to do as a result of these presentations tonight is to think seriously about what you have heard from both sides. Don't let yourself be stampeded. Don't let yourself be told, "It's over. You actually don't really have any say in this because 51% of the people sent this back to you for a vote." Think about it. Think carefully about it. Be respectful of each other, and then vote wisely. And that's all I'm asking you to do, and that's all that the advocates for the 100 and 1/2 million... And that's all I'm asking you to do, and that's all that the advocates for the one hundred and thirty-five million dollar alternative are asking you to do. Thank you very much, and I apologize for exceeding my time.
Uh, Mr. Sean Lynn Jones.
Madam Moderator, could you remind me how much time I have? And will it be the same amount that Mr. Van Skoyek just had?
Mr. Van Skoyek didn't play by the rules. I know you played by the rules. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Sean Lynn Jones, town meeting member from precinct one and a former chair of the advisory committee. I've been involved in town politics and government for a long time, town meeting and on the advisory committee for many years. And there aren't many issues I feel more strongly about than this one. That's why I joined with the four other most recent former chairs of the advisory committee to endorse the rebuild Pierce option that was on the ballot and was approved by the voters. You may have seen the letter we wrote. It's the fiscally and morally responsible thing to do. I want to say a few things about what you've heard recently because I really enjoyed my good friend Harry Friedman's speech and his discussion of cars. What really struck me was that he said that the advisory committee last night reached for a lifeline when the Don Van Skoyek's amendment came forward. Reaching for a lifeline is what you do when you're desperate and when you're sinking. And to me, the desperation is obvious. This was an amendment that had never been vetted through the usual process of the advisory committee hearings by the Capitol Subcommittee. It was a last-minute, underdeveloped idea that hadn't been fleshed out earlier in the process, where there's no schematic design, where the cost will escalate if we do what was, uh, even in that rudimentary idea, and it won't meet the needs of Pierce's community. It won't provide the better learning environment they need. And I think you've heard that in great detail from Mr. Pearlman. For all these reasons, there is no way the town meeting tonight should vote to appropriate a hundred and thirty-five million dollars. I know what the advisory committee usually does to vet proposals like this, and it just didn't happen, unfortunately, for the Pierce amendment, perhaps because there was so much desperation. The other important point to remember on the debt issue is that almost all of our debt is financed by debt exclusions. By definition, that was approved by the voters. We have a debt level that will increase a little bit, even with the Pierce borrowing, and then start declining. We have a triple A Moody's rating, the best you can get, that keeps our interests low as possible. We're paying off that debt. It will decline, and we will probably keep that rating because in their forward guidance, Moody's praises us for financing our borrowing with debt exclusions, approved by the voters, that it's dedicated to paying off, uh, the borrowing and, uh, you know, declining as time goes forward. I wanted to speak for a moment from the heart because I really think this is an important issue. And the number one reason that it's important is that we need to respect the will of the voters, the basic principle of democracy. Opponents of rebuilding Pierce tie themselves in intellectual knots as they try to explain why they feel entitled to vote for a different plan than the one that was on the ballot or no plan at all. It's a little bit as if the electoral college said, hey, it was close between Biden and Trump, so let's vote for Romney instead as an alternative. Uh, constitutionally, that actually could happen, even though some states try to bind their electors.
You've had three minutes, Mr.
I just wanted to say, I, I don't know how I or any of you would be able to look somebody in the eye when they ask, why did town meeting, maybe even a minority of town meeting, vote to undercut the will of the voters, vote to basically disregard what happened at the ballots on May second? I urge you to vote no on the Fisher Amendment, vote yes on the select board amendment, and then yes, favorable action on the amended motion. And thank you very much, uh, Madam Moderator, for reporting me the latitude.
Mr. Ridgeway, could you please come to the podium?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Carlos Cidarejo, town meeting member for precinct fourteen, chair of the Capitol Subcommittee of the Advisory Committee, and speaking for myself. I love Runkel. My son goes to Runkel. It's a great three-section school. Eleven years ago, it underwent a renovation and expansion project, which basically doubled its size. The cost was twenty-nine million dollars. Is Runkel fancy? No, but it sure works well. Does it have a large atrium? No, we didn't need that. Does it have large windows in the gymnasium? No, we didn't need those either. Expansive interior glass that looks into the classrooms? No, we didn't know that. We didn't need those either, and kids can't focus with them anyway. Runkel is a collection of brick and concrete block boxes. We didn't, we didn't need anything fancier. It works well with what it needs, we needed to do, which is to be, serve as an utilitarian space for teachers to teach in. Runkel was designed by the Design Partnership of Cambridge. Are there a fancy architecture firm? No, we didn't need that either. Ten years ago, we decided to spend close to two hundred, sorry, close to a hundred and twenty million dollars for a four-section school. Today, we're proposing a whopping two hundred and twelve million dollars for a four-section Pierce school. How can the cost have skyrocketed from the affordable twenty-nine million dollar Runkel to the exorbitant two hundred and twelve Pierce? I can guess how. The process is broken, very broken. Over the last few years, our project needs have been replaced by our aspirational wants. Yes, I too would love to have a Tesla, but I know I can't afford one, so therefore I don't get one. Our building committees have lost their sense of reality and have trouble differentiating between what we want and what we really need. Our wants have become our needs. The educational plan is created under the cloak of the closed-door process, and then we say, that's it. That's what we need. That's our budget. Now we seem to hire fancy architects with their fancy brick patterns. Do we need to? No. We add glass walls to our hallways that we cannot keep clean. Do we need them? No. We add, we include atriums that are expensive to maintain. We want more and more. The majority of members in the building committees have their decision makings interfered by their self-interest. This makes moderation or fiduciary responsibility difficult. The sole member of the advisory committee in these committees is mostly ignored. The town employees feel uncomfortable telling us how to spend our own money. So we're left with those who just want more and more, and this is how we get from twenty-nine million to two hundred and twelve in eleven years. This is going to get only worse, and it's going to get more and more expensive. We gave away our credit card and it's being maxed out. Buildings are getting larger, fancier, harder to maintain. We no longer think boring boxes are good enough for us. We want fancy stuff, and now we have to pay for it. I don't agree. My precinct doesn't agree. I'm voting no. I'm voting like how my constituents asked me to represent them. I'm voting no on the select board motion.
Ariel Maddox. You'll have three minutes. I'm sorry. I can't hear you. Oh, you have slides.
Thank you. I'm Ariel Maddox. She/her. I'm a town meeting member for precinct ten. I'm also a property owner and a parent of two children, sixth and eighth grades, both attend Pierce and have since kindergarten. I love the strength of the Pierce community, and you had the chance to meet lots of Pierce families out front tonight, supporting a yes vote for Pierce. My family's okay with finishing our time at Pierce in a swing space because, yes, I believe demolishing the Pierce building that's shown in this image is necessary. The community is strong, and this is the ethical thing to do. We must improve the educational space for future generations of Brookline. Next slide, please. I ask you to vote to appropriate and bond for Pierce as the voters authorized. So please join me in voting no on the Fisher Amendment, yes on the select board amendment, and for full bonding for Pierce. This, this has been years in the making, so no last-minute alternative is going to suddenly magically find a solution that hasn't been explored. Next slide, please. My family has had a fantastic experience at Pierce. In our nine years at Pierce, my family has experienced caring, dedicated, thoughtful teachers, providing a great education, lovely walks to schools, and a great community. What my children don't realize is how much time and energy the teachers expend preparing to teach in the classrooms. Notice my emphasis on "in the classrooms" because a significant amount of teaching energy goes into simply managing the structural limitations of the building. The physical building takes away from valuable teaching and learning activities, and we heard Principal Yedoff say, my eighth grader has lost a full year of learning due to the space. Next slide, please. In addition to this, the school is not accessible. Any number of things, from a couple of steps here to a two-and-a-half-story elevation change on the campus, high noise levels impacting hearing, and many doors that are too narrow for adult wheelchairs means parents in wheelchairs can't visit, children can't attend the school, and children in crutches and wheelchairs have to go to a different school. Neurodivergent children often cannot attend Pierce. Next slide, please. Pierce abounds with accessibility challenges, challenges that mean renovation is not an option, and that creates limits on who can attend Pierce based on physical abilities and means children with a variety of disabilities have to transfer to another school, taking away from having a truly neighborhood school. Next slide, please. You know the movie Labyrinth and all the stairs that jut out irrationally? Well, Pierce is like that, except our stairs are literally falling apart. For fourteen years of living here, I have heard Pierce will be next for school updates. Teachers at Pierce told me they've been hearing that for decades. Imagine your workspace saying that you have to wait for that long. Next slide, please. Coming back to the first image, this space has twelve classrooms plus the library, two hundred and fifty students, plus their teachers, all in one current open space. My children are neurotypical, and they've been able to learn and have positive experiences. But Pierce cannot be, cannot be remodeled without perpetuating the sacrifices and taking a toll on community and the educational quality. Next slide, please. Please join me in voting yes on the select board amendment to restore the full two hundred and ten million funding so that Pierce can do the right thing and meet the needs of our children. Thank you.
John Bassett, could you please come to the podium?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm John Bassett, precinct six.
Oh, you have three minutes. You have the regular three minutes. I apologize.
Yeah, thank you. I've had just two technical problems with my tablet, and both times I went to the hallway and got it fixed and just quit. Never left my seat, just quit working. So anyway, I was glad to get it fixed. Please vote no on the select board's amendment for two hundred and nine million. If it passes, then please vote, if it becomes the main motion, please vote no. If the amendment fails and a hundred and thirty-five billion is the main motion, please vote yes. I've spent a lot of time in Sandwich, um, but I'm not baloney. I'm not tied in knots. I got interested when, when I, I saw the proposal was to build on top of, to demolish the existing building and build where it is, rather than building across the street in the playground, building a three or four-section school there, uh, avoiding the millions of dollars which would be needed to repair the garage with the present proposal, and more, most important, avoiding the four or five years disruption during construction that, that the present proposal demands. We were Pierce parents in the seventies and eighties. It was then a good three-section school with minimal use of the historic building. If the historic building is fully accessible, that should add space which will compensate for loss of space in, in the newer building. The open plan is good for most kids. It's not, not for all. Uh, but the new building also, as, as has been said, is not all open space. It has discreet classrooms. Charlie Simmons, our director of public buildings, wrote about both Pierce buildings in a memo to the advisory committee. He's, he wrote, neither building is at the end of its life. Both are safe, have fully functioning life safety systems and HVAC systems, along with a modernized elevator. I have heard two arguments in favor of the two hundred and nine million proposal. The building is deficient, and we must vote as the voters voted on May two. The deficiency argument has been well made, but it's incomplete. It does not, it does not explain why, um, the two hundred and ten million is needed, why it's better than, than just fixing the building and, and spending less money. If we vote as the voters voted on May two, fifty-one percent of us will vote, will vote for the two hundred and ten million, and it will fail. Um, the way forward is to, uh, is to vote, vote the main motion for a hundred and thirty-five, which might be something that, that two-thirds of us can accept. Let's not demolish a sound and interesting building. Let's not choose the alternative with the most embedded carbon. Let's not spend millions fixing the garage below the school. Let's not bus Pierce kids to alternate buildings for at least four years during construction. Let's just fix the building. Let's adopt the main motion for a hundred and thirty-five million. Thank you very much.
And Representative Vitolo, it's the Sixth Sense. You have three minutes.
I'm State Representative Tommy Vitolo, town meeting member at large. I serve as vice chair for the Joint Committee on Election Laws and have gained some expertise in my three years in this role. The Fisher Amendment relates to an alleged campaign finance violation and OCPF review. Under no circumstances will OCPF change the outcome of the election. They don't have the authority. Only a judge can change the outcome of a certified election. And since no filing for injunction has been made, this town meeting must make the obvious and logical conclusion that the voters have spoken the outcome clear. Regarding the Van Skoyek effort, the Massachusetts School Building Authority will not fund the Van Skoyek proposal because it does not meet their standards for equity, accessibility, or capacity. The MSBA will also not tolerate any more delay. A failure tonight in approving what the voters approved on May second does not restart the clock with MSBA. It removes us from their process completely. Given Beacon Hill conversations about whether the MSBA should even be funding projects in communities like Brookline, tonight may be the last opportunity for us to ever receive funding from the MSBA. If Town Meeting passes the Van Skoyek Amendment and votes to bomb the funds for this project, Town Meeting will not have a one hundred and thirty-five million dollar revenue source to pay for the project. Voters pass question one for a new Pierce school, and Town Meeting may not use that revenue to pay for something that is not a new Pierce school. As Town Council has detailed, the only option would be to ignore the results of a democratically-held free and fair election on May second and call for a do-over, or to appeal to the Massachusetts Legislature to pass a specific law making the funding approved by voters on May second apply to a renovation rather than a new school. I am not an election denier, and I would not file a bill to overturn the results of a free and fair election. Furthermore, I would invest the time and energy necessary to persuade my colleagues that Brookline voters deserve a full-throated support of their state legislature. I urge the Select Board, School Committee, School Building Committee, and others to hear the forty-nine percent and to work hard to find savings and efficiencies on a new Pierce school and all future capital projects. I urge my fellow town meeting members to keep it simple. The Fisher Amendment wastes time and money and require us to deny the outcome of a free and fair election. The Van Skoyek effort is not what voters asked for and has no funding source. Each amendment guarantees no Pierce improvements for the foreseeable future and eventual improvements at higher cost than what was passed on May second. The least-cost way to create an accessible and equitable learning environment for all children in Brookline Village is to vote no on the Fisher Amendment, yes on the Select Board substitute motion. yes on the select board substitute motion and yes on the main motion. It's great to be back. Thank you.
Ms. Ashkenazi. Did I have the mic turned on up front, please?
Thank you. Miriam Ashkenazi, Select Board. Madam Moderator, I would like to call the question.
Second.
Okay. Yes, we will of course record the vote to call the question. We will have a recorded two thirds vote majority is required to call the question. Before we allow that to be called, I will let you know who is waiting to speak. We have Arissa Boyd, Nancy Heller, Mr. Elperin, Mr. Englander, Mr. Reeters, Ms. Correa. I can't read my writing, hold on a minute. Ms. Frius, Mr. Ananian, Ms. Zimmerman, Ms. Linios, Catherine Anderson, Mr. Gashak, Ms. Smith, Mr. Rudolph, Ms. Vogt, Ms. Roseman, Mr. Lubovitz. And I think that covers it. All right, so those are the people who are waiting to speak. But we have the motion to call the question. Okay. Wait, okay, everybody make sure you're signed in, that your tablet's working. It's awake, you are on the right page. I'll give you a few seconds to do that before we drop the vote. Nope, wait a minute. Oh, yes. We're voting. We are voting to call the question. Thank you. Which means, which means that the debate will end. And we will then vote on the three options you have before you relating to the bonding of the Pierce school. So we are now going to vote on whether or not to call the question. Okay. Sorry, give me the 223 yes. Okay, the motion to call the question passes. We have 223 votes yes or 210 votes yes, 23 no and three abstentions. Okay. Now we get to the fun part of me explaining of what we're voting on when and what it means. Okay, we are first going to vote on the Fisher amendment. Now, as you know, the initial, the Fisher amendment would require that before any funding of the school appropriation occurred and it is the appropriation that is set out in the select board motion on page 35 of supplement one, which relates to the $209 million appropriation for the new Pierce school. That before that be done, that there be finding from the Office of Campaign Finance of No Wrongdoing. Have I put that correctly, Council Callanan? Would you agree with that description? The Fisher amendment. Okay, council agrees that that is a correct description. So we will first vote on that and then I'll tell you what happens next. If that is passed, then we would vote on that as applies to the actual select board amendment or the actual original select board.
My new voter, Madam Moderator.
Yes.
Chuck Schwartz, precinct nine. Does each vote require a two thirds?
No, no, no. Very good point. The amendments, each amendment requires a majority vote. So the Fisher amendment would have to pass by a majority vote. It would then go, and if it passed, it would be applied to the original version of the proposition, which is now found on page 35 of the supplement, the original $209 million appropriation, which I'm now going to call the selective board substitute motion, for lack of anything better. It would be broken into that if passed. That motion would then be voted on as amended. And if passed, it would become the main motion. Well, anyway, okay. So let's first deal with the Fisher, Fisher amendment, see what happens and then move on from there. Because I think that one is going to be fairly easily dealt with. Okay, so we are going to vote now on whether or not to make the appropriation of any money is contingent on the outcome of any complaints with the Campaign Finance Commission. So this will require a majority to win. And we will drop the vote now. The Fisher amendment fails by a vote of 30 yes, 203 no and eight abstentions. So we now move on to what is, I am calling the Select Board Substitute Motion. And this is the, again, let me go through the parliamentary twists and turns. The Select Board Substitute Motion is actually the original motion that was presented to you requesting funding of $209 million for a new Pierce school. When the Van Scoyek amendment was filed requesting that instead $135 million cap of funding be given to renovate the school, the AC considered that and decided to adopt that as its motion. Since it adopted it as its motion, that became the main motion. Because the advisory committee as finance committee always presents the main motion on the budget. Back to arcane procedural rules, you always vote on amendments before you vote on the main budget. So we now vote on the substitute motion, i.e. the original $209 million. If it is passed as an amendment by a majority, it will then become the main motion. It will have to pass by a two thirds majority. If that does not pass by a two thirds majority, then we will go on to vote on the AC slash, oh. Oh, I'm sorry. Fails, then that's it. Okay, but if it does not pass by a, anyway, all right.
Madam Moderator, I have a question.
Myself, no questions, no. Yes, Mr.
I do, I do have a question because I'm now confused. So this, if I want to vote in favor of fully funding Pierce at 209, I would vote yes on the select board motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Twice.
Yes.
Anybody who has coffee, if we weren't finishing up, I would ask, ask you to bring me some, but we are finishing up. Okay, so what you are going to be. Oh, yes, Mr. O'Neill.
Madam Moderator, after this vote, can we make a motion to adjourn?
No.
No, okay.
Oh, but once this whole. Oh, yes. Yes, absolutely. You can do, do it right now. Okay, we are now going to vote on the Select Board Substitute Motion, which asks you to approve funding of the Pierce school to approve bonding in the amount of approximately $209 million for the building of a new Pierce school. To pass the amendment, it requires a majority vote. Okay, we will now drop the vote or drop the ballot. Please vote. Okay, the amendment has passed with 193 yes, 42 no and four abstentions. It now becomes the main motion. So in order for the main motion, which is to approve appropriation of $209 million to be bonded, to be spent for the purposes of constructing a new Pierce school, it will have to be approved by a two thirds vote. Please vote now. Okay, we have, the moderator officially announces the result that the motion passes by two thirds, vote of 197 yes, 34 no and nine abstentions. We are not done yet. I have received a motion to adjourn. We will take a voice vote on that. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you very much for your patience and I look forward to seeing you tomorrow night. Barbara Scotto, would you please come to the front of the auditorium?